Okay, we're gonna call to order the Kensington Town Council meeting for April 10. We have one of our council members, Anne Litter, is online. So she's on the Zoom. She is on a working engagement in Chicago, so she's calling in. Anne, thank you for joining us tonight. Right, so we're gonna get started. But before we do, Jared Solomon is coming this evening. He's gonna come around 7:30, 7:45, 8 o'clock, somewhere in that time period, to discuss the item on our agenda number four. So we may move things around when Jared gets here. Okay, all right, so let's get started to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think that got dropped because of the, we don't do it on Zoom. Okay, now our next item up for, on the agenda is Moment of Silence. Is there anyone that people would like us to lift up? Okay, if not, if we can bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. Counsel everyone, receive the minutes. And I didn't see any edits online. I have one, but is anybody else?
No.
Okay, last item, right before we adjourned, excuse me, we quickly spoke about just changing the, the council agreed to reschedule our budget forum from April 3rd to May 1st. And then we adjourned the meeting. So Susan, if you could just add that. Okay, so we're gonna go down to, need a motion to approve.
And we accept the council meeting minutes, March 20, 2024.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Okay, we'll move down to the announcements. Matt, do you wanna just go over that real quick?
Sure, the town election is scheduled for June 3rd, 2024, and certificate of nominations are due by 4:00 PM on Monday, May 13. We had a preliminary candidate form, if necessary, scheduled for Monday, May 20. However, we were advised that that date may not be appropriate. There's an event going on in the building, so the council, if necessary, should probably schedule another date for a forum.
Yeah, three of us are participating in the event on the 20th, so. So it's really in just regards to Anne, Nate, and myself. Is the 21st, 22nd, or 23rd, does that work for your schedules?
Unfortunately, I'm gonna be out of town for a conference, the 21st and 22nd.
Okay, do you wanna make it on the 23rd?
Let me, let me check and see if I'm back by then. I think I am. Just a minute. Yeah, that should be fine in the evening.
Yes. Okay, we'll switch it to the 23rd. Also, I have little notes to myself all over the place here. So the May-June newsletter deadline, which is typically will run an article for each candidate. The deadline for the usual contributors will be May 10, and the deadline for candidates will be May 15. And even if it's a, if we don't have, it's uncontested, if you would like to provide something, an update about yourself in the journal, that would be, would be good, would be nice. Okay, and let's see, because our town council meeting is the second Wednesday, that's the 8th, the the last day to declare is the 13th, which is the second Monday, we will actually announce the candidates on our website. Since we will not be meeting, that's usually where we do it, is at the meeting, but we will be meeting the week before. So. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Alright, so let's move on to number, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, Joe. Yes, Joe. I'm gonna move on, Joe.
He may be trying to talk, but.
Yeah, we can, if you can fix your, we can come back later to you, Joe. Audio issues, okay. Well, if the question is if anybody's declared, no, other than the three of us, no one else has declared. Okay. So let's move on down to number two. The Antique Row and Explore Kensington marquee signs. Counsel, you received some suggested change in the Antique Row sign that sits at Connecticut and West Howard and Connecticut and East Howard. The sign is in disrepair and needs to be either removed or refurbished, or I'm not sure, we haven't actually had, what is, it's not Shanahan, what is the?
Shannonbaum.
Shannonbaum. Shannonbaum has not come down recently to inspect the sign. But they may not be able to refurbish it, they may have to replace it. So we're just working on any change in the language. We're not talking about design at the moment, it's just the language. So there's three options for the, one at East Howard, and there's one option for West Howard. Currently, the East Howard signs, just as it says Antique Row, and then underneath, we've added, I think, unique shop, or shopping, dining, events, and art, I think it was, currently. And the West Howard, basically, it just directs you to West Howard, it doesn't give any specifics, like what's being provided now. I know we've got people here, we've received at least one email, I think you all received that. Are you on your?
Not on there.
On your?
Yeah.
I can forward it. Well, Margaret's here, she can go over what her letter said. Yeah. And so the council wants to hear from the people that are here and online first, and then we can discuss it. Okay, so if, if you're here and want to go to the podium, just give your name and your street, or your connection to the town. You can give testimony on your preferences and why, and and let's just remember, it's not about design at the moment, it's only about the verbiage. Did you wanna go?
I think it feels like I'm on.
Oh, alright, well, I do have people online, I think, that are gonna speak to, but they haven't raised, well, they haven't raised their hands, so.
Give him a sec.
We can give him a sec. Okay, Jody, you can go first.
Oh, okay, you can hear me. I like the first one, Explore Kensington at Antique Row. I personally feel that we have a lot of stores on the road that are new stores, that we have a lot of boutique stores that are more than, than antique stores, and I think we need to highlight those stores. And by talking about Explore Kensington, I think that does that, and I would like to, and I would like to see that. And so that's why I would like to see Explore Kensington as the first, as the top line on, on the sign.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else online? Not seeing anyone else's hand? Anyone in the audience would like to get up?
Having learned that one of the council members hasn't seen my letter, I will avail myself of the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you do have, she has it, he's got a copy.
But since there's an audience of people there and a few here, it's not long, it's just a little over page. But let me introduce myself first. I know many people here, but my name's Margaret Goldsboro, and I'm the co-owner with my sister Susan Goldsboro-Glynn of Goldsboro-Glynn Classic Furnishings and Vines at the corner of Fawcett and Howard. Had that shop since 2008, but I've been on Kensington Antique Row since 2002, when I took space in the multi-dealer market. And we grew bigger and bigger space there, and in that early time, I took over a lot of volunteer activities on behalf of the other, the group, there was already a group in place called the Old Town Kensington Merchants Association. And because I had a long career before antiques, doing communications, I sort of fell into that job of helping with the promotion of Kensington Antique Row. So let me read you my letter, and then I'd like to make a few other points. It was addressed on Monday to the mayor and the town council. "The Antique Row sign at Connecticut and Howard is a beautiful local landmark and works to draw people to the Howard Avenue commercial area. The sign certainly needs refreshing, we too noticed the rust, but the strong message should not be changed. You have a very, very successful brand here. With just 10 characters, a clear message shown in high contrast and legible at a great distance, this is an excellent example of effective outdoor advertising. Kudos to the town leaders, merchants, and state officials who supported the establishment of Kensington Antique Row decades ago. When we ask new customers how they found us, many say, 'I saw the sign and my car just turned onto Howard Avenue.' They are delighted to find nine individual shops with different antique and vintage wares, two multi-dealer antique malls, markets that represent 19 different small businesses, three bookstores, all of which offer used titles as well as new books. There are also now three restaurants and a bakery, which located on Antique Row, knowing that the town residents would support them. And so would the antique shoppers, who take their time, hours on Antique Row, and they need to find something to eat. Excluding the food venues, there are nine storefront businesses on all of Antique Row. Howard, including Howard, Armory, and Fawcett, that don't carry antique or vintage wares, only nine of all the many businesses. They include a nail salon, gas station, two art venues, two shops, a hair salon, and a music venue. But it is very interesting to note that half, more than half of them belong to our marketing association, which is dedicated to promoting Kensington Antique Row. They understand the value of a true destination with a memorable identity. Montgomery County also knows a good thing when they see it. Visit Moco says, 'The West Howard Antiques District and Kensington Antique Row have gained a reputation for their antique and vintage items from all over the globe. The area is famous for showcasing unique, one-of-a-kind items in a retail setting both charming and fun in an historic community. Google knows too. Just Google, 'What is Kensington known for?' Google will reply, 'Kensington is known for some of its popular attractions, the Mormon Temple, Kensington Antique Row, and the noise library for young children. Drivers entering the town of Kensington at every end road are notified with the cheerful green and yellow signs that they have arrived. They know they are in Kensington, they are already exploring. What they may be looking for, or surprised to find, is the destination Antique Row. Sounds like fun, let's check that out. Please, keep the simple Antique Row message on this very effective sign, both to support the businesses that chose Kensington because of Antiques Row, Antique Row, excuse me, and to honor the visionary team that made it happen so many years ago. That was my letter, and what I didn't mention in there is that over the 20 odd years that I've been helping the group advertise, we've used that sign, the imagery of that sign, which is very photogenic, and it also can be converted into other art forms, as the centerpiece of the advertising. This includes print advertising on rack cards, which we've distributed regionally, on the Sunday driver brochure, on antique week guide publications, and on the websites of these various venues where we advertise. Furthermore, it's the iconic image on the top of our website, KensingtonAntiqueRow.com, which is very effective. The people that don't say they came because of the sign, say, a lot of them, that they came because of KensingtonAntiqueRow.com, where our members support a website that includes lists of shops by name, lists of shops by type of merchandise, with links, with short descriptions of each of those on the website, but also links to their own websites. And let me mention again, that there are quite a number of non-antiques-related businesses that choose to participate in this and recognize the value of Antique Row as the destination that brings business to them. If I can address Jody's comment of a moment ago, there are not that many boutiques on Antique Row, as she's suggesting. There are a few, and several of them belong, or have belonged, to our group, and the restaurants belong, because they recognize that there's an overlapping audience, so. If I could just make one more point, and that has to do with the length of the message. I know we're not talking design here, but a fundamental of outdoor advertising is brevity. Antique Row is 10 characters, and because it is just 10 characters, those characters are two feet tall, probably. Now, anything you do to put more text onto that space, two lines of text, you will diminish the impact of that message by more than one half, because the letters must be smaller, there must be space in between them, and then there's your other line of text. In my previous life, as a communications person for organizations, I actually had occasion to design some billboards and learn the lessons that the people from the billboard companies taught me. And that has to do with the brevity of the message, the contrast. The greatest contrast you can have is yellow and black, but we do a great job with the yellow and green, because it's a very dark, nice green. And size. This one is magnificent, because you can read it from blocks away. You can sit at the red light at Knowles, and on Connecticut at Knowles, and at Knowles at Connecticut, and you can read that sign. You can't read any little ones under it, and if you did a two-line message like that, you would not read any of them from these distances. And come the other way, coming down University and coming down Connecticut, you don't stop necessarily, so you won't even have a chance to read it. So I'm hoping that you will honor your predecessors who came up with this brilliant idea, and all of those, all of those of us who have been working here and promoting Kensington, Kensington Antique Row for decades. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Does anybody have any questions for Margaret while she's up at the podium?
I just have a question. Thank you, Susan. Thank you very much. I think that's, that's really helpful. Until, until your last point, it wasn't clear that you were, that it was, you were saying not to include Explore Kensington, I thought you were just saying this.
Saying, keep Antique Row as the principal message at the big side, size. If, when I talked to Tracy about this before, there's all kinds of discussion about perhaps altering the lower portion of the sign, where there could be a whole line dedicated to ExploreKensington.com.
It's explore into the, keep Explore, Antique Row at the top, right, so.
Yeah, and Explore, you would be open to having Explore Kensington.
I'm just, I'm just very passionately in favor of keeping the Antique Row message, the 10-character message at monster scale, so that it is read.
Yeah, I guess my, my only other question is, and it may be hard for you to answer this, but you said that the other businesses that are non-antique businesses are part of the marketing group.
Old Town Marketing Merchants Association.
Yeah, so, and they're, and they're supportive, they, they love the sign. Do you know, though, if they're aware of the potential alternative to also have Explore Kensington, and whether they would prefer that?
Well, I know there's, there are certainly some differences in opinion, and that's why in the, this memo comes from me and my sister.
Okay.
Not from the whole group, but I have shared it with the whole group, and I've, in a covering memo to them, I've, you know, made some of these pages I've made on the side here, that all our advertising for decades has been oriented around the sign and the name. And I was hoping more of them would show up tonight to speak, but it could be that some others will speak or chime in, so.
Thank you.
I think you'll find that most of the antiques and vintage businesses are gonna wanna see the sign restored, and this time maintained, and continue on, because it's a very successful brand that you've got.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Matt, proposed work is just to refurbish the current sign?
So the intent tonight is to just kind of get a better idea of what language we would move forward with.
But are we replacing the sign, or just refurbishing?
So we don't know yet. Our sign contractor, Shannonbaum, has evaluated the sign a number of years ago. We were looking at just kind of recreating what was there at that point in time, but then there's been, you know, an opportunity here that we could add Explore Kensington, which is our brand in marketing for over 15 years now, for the entire town. So this is an opportunity for the public and the council to kind of discuss that move forward on the side.
And I, I think part of it, too, is over time, as businesses that are not antique-related, have always felt that they weren't included in this. I know Margaret has very strong opinions, but that is why we added the hanging little dropping of, you know, shops, art, events, and things like that, to try to, because we weren't in a place where we were going to be replacing the sign. So now that the sign needs either refurbishment or replacement, it's been up over 20 years.
Yeah, it went in with the streetscape in 2001. And, you know, as the council's aware, the business district is farther than Howard Avenue. I mean, it basically goes to Baby Cat at this point, we've seen a lot of changes in that area, we have some services down there. We've had requests from multiple businesses to add specific taglines, you know, we've always been kind of generalist.
Yeah.
You know, so this is just an opportunity to get some feedback, and figure out how we will proceed.
So I asked, just to get more background, and, you know, obviously, there were more space, I will say this, Margaret, you make very compelling points about the size and the breadth. And this is not a gotcha, but I did notice, nine times, you call it Kensington Antique Row. Now, leaving Explore out, this is, to me, is a marquee that is also for placemaking the town.
But they already know they're in the town. They've been told at every portal.
And while that may be, it's still an opportunity, as we are looking to replace it, to also decide whether what we did 20 years ago, which may have been great and served a purpose, can serve that purpose and other purposes at the same time. And as I, as I look at it, I mean, space constraints, that's why I ask if we're just refurbishing or replacing, and there may be ways to get additional square footage. I mean, I looked, it's a beautiful website for Kensington Antique Row and Facebook page, and I noticed that it is, it is not merely Antique Row, it is Kensington Antique Row, that it is as important to Antique Row that it is in Kensington, and that for the shops that are not antique, it could be an opportunity to open up the sign to being a placemaker for all of Kensington. These are, you know, my feedback is just looking at the, the different drawings and looking at the sign online. But part of it comes down to space. Were it to be the same?
I think it's going to be the same size. I don't see the dimensions changing. You want the height for obvious reasons, you want to, we, we hang the banners there for the different events, so you want the same spacing, and, you know, so I don't think there was any thought of changing the height, more of maybe we have to talk to Shannonbaum about the scrolling, can they repeat that, and things like that. So there's.
The structure.
Yeah, but I, I don't think the size is actually going to change. I know there's might be a couple of other people that have some thoughts on that, so I wanna give them an opportunity to. Gloria, you have to come to that. Just give your, name and address, or just street, name and.
Ray Capron, Montgomery Avenue. Been here for many, many years, and I just think, I loved when the signage came in 20 years ago, very, it was great. Now we know where everything is, for the most part. But I think if there is a refurbishing, and that needs to be done, maintenance has to happen. And, and perhaps we've had this evolution of diversity in businesses that's gone on down the street. I just think it's important to have the sign be a placemaker or a placeholder for our town, and I, I had even thought, and I, and Margaret, I hadn't really reviewed this with you, but perhaps it's the Row on East Howard. Something that is a little more open to all the other possibilities that are going on down the, down, down Howard Avenue. And the other part of this is just doing a bit of an homage to the Row, which is historic. And that block is pretty much is half historic houses and half businesses. And I just think it would be nice to keep the Row in the name if there is some change. I also think that explore is the verb, and the Row, or the Row on East Howard, is a place or a noun. And I think that most signage is the noun, when it's speaking in terms of place. So I think it would be better to do it that way. And explore, I love the explorer idea, I've always loved it all these 20 years, but I think it stays in the website, in the newsletter, in the Facebook. It can be used many other ways, but I think it, I think there are other towns that use explore too.
Pretty popular.
Yeah, it's very popular. But it is the verb, it's the invitation to do. And if we can have a placeholder for the place, I think it should be a noun.
Okay.
And that's.
Thank you. Tyler, I see you out there, not to put you on the spot, but would you be able, just to address the West Howard, since you're on the West Howard? That one's not quite as emotional. Yeah, if you could come up and just give us your feedback on that one. Just give your name and the, the name of your business.
I'm Tyler Whitmore, co-owner of Tyler Whitmore Interiors, on the west side of Howard Avenue. I'm also here as an observer for Kensington Hand, as I'm the president of that organization. We had discussed this at one of our board meetings, and we liked the idea of Explore Kensington, I mean, basically this, we, we all really liked this, because it addressed all of the different businesses that were down on West Howard.
Yeah, you have quite a few different distances, they're all over the map there.
Vintage art services and food, so that sort of covered it all. We were very happy with this.
Okay. Yeah, that's great, no, no, I appreciate, I think it'd just be nice to, um. You know, we are using the Explore Kensington on West Howard, we could always just say West Howard instead of which I think is what it says now.
Explore Kensington is the right brand. And I, and I say that there were probably five or six um, members of the board at that meeting and we all came to this consensus.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I clarify something with Tyler?
I'm sorry, who's that, Anne, I'm sorry, go ahead Anne.
Sorry, I know it's hard, I'm, I'm remote today. When Tyler was talking about the discussion within the Kensington Can board meeting, was that for both signs? Uh, the, that they were supportive of, of adding Explore Kensington, I know they definitely were for West Howard.
Um, they definitely looked at both signs at the meeting, because some of the members, of course, of Kensington Can are on West Howard. Um, they did like that, um, I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but the consensus was that they like the Explore Kensington, you know, being on both sides, it made sense.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jody, did you want to come back in?
Yeah, I did, I, I just wanted to say again that I, I think if it just says Antique Row, you're, you're doing a disservice to any. Any of the stores that aren't antique, aren't antique stores and that anyone who is driving by and just sees Antique Row. They're not necessarily going to make that right turn onto, onto Howard Avenue, they're not going to know that SW seven is there or Pink Dot. And, and go into that, into that store and know that they're going to get clothing or, or, you know. Or get those wonderful um, things that are in those stores, even if they're members of those, of the antique um. Group that you, that you have Margaret, so I think it's important to have that explore Kensington there. And um, you're, you still have that Antique Row on the sign and, and I still think you have that, that name there. And so I don't think you want to give a disservice to those stores that are, that are on Howard Avenue, those other stores that are there. I think you want to be more of a community to those stores. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak? We don't necessarily have to make a decision tonight, um, but I do want to get, you know. Some, some consensus.
I'll, I'll go ahead and give my view. I, I like the simplicity of just Antique Row. I, I don't think we have to cover everything in one sign. You know, we are not known as an area for shopping, we're not known as an area for dining or arts. The one thing that, you know, the one thing we have, I think, is the antique district. And so I, I like the idea of hitting people with that in big, bold letters. I don't, I don't know that it excludes the others, because we have a bunch of the Kensington Historic Business District Wayfinder signs as well. That point us to the parks and the shopping and farmers market and restaurants. And we have those, in fact, one of them is right across the street from the sign that we're talking about, and so. I, I just think that what is unique about Kensington and what is unique about that area is it's historic, it's Antique Row. You know, twenty years from now, if, if, you know, people aren't buying antiques and all those stores have transitioned, we might reconsider, but even that, I would still think that's the one thing that historically has stood out as a. Marketing plus for this town. So. I, I, I think, I think. Adding the additional words of Explore Kensington Antique Row just clutters the sign and, and makes drivers who are hopefully only going thirty miles an hour, but. Often by passenger.
You can hope.
Twenty-five, um, it, it, I, it just, it, it, it gives them the, the, the one marketing thing that we have here, and so I would prefer to keep it simple. Use the other signs, but I want to keep the one below it, hanging, unique shopping or dining and art, but, but keep the Kensington Historic District, District signs. As additional wayfinding, but not clutter the, the, the main sign.
Okay. So you're okay though with adding, so you're basically looking at number three?
I like number three.
Number three, okay. I think there was one comment regarding um, is adding an S on arts, so it would imply more than one type of art. So that, yeah. Okay, Connor, any thoughts?
No, I mean, I said no. Going back to, I'm looking at the um. Google Maps Street View, right, just trying to get an idea of moving up and down Connecticut Avenue. And, you know, Margaret's point about maximizing the size of the letters does make a difference. If we put two rows of text, it will be. Almost unbeatable, um, certainly at speed. That's why the design, I mean, how much is the, what do you call these flourishes, these?
Oh, the scrollings.
Um, just the scrolling underneath, well, it adds a certain. Styles, um, it, it strikes me as Antique Row can still be large, there's room if you remove the scrolling underneath. To put a secondary sign that is Explore Kensington, really that big brand, because there's the one hanging side that is the website. But again, when you, at, at the size that it is, you know.
Well, they're, they're afterthoughts, I mean, both of those signs are afterthoughts and they're a, um, they're. Came about because, as I said, because, yeah, there, there were more stores that weren't antiques and then there were more, uh, then. Uh, we invested in making Explore Kensington our branding, that was our branding. And we've put a lot of time and energy into Explore Kensington and, you know, I think we've. Reached a point where it is making a difference, people are.
And that's why I am interested in finding a way to include it more than it is now, um, when I look at the mockups. The mockups led me to believe that there's a way to do a second level sign that is more than the hanging sign. Maybe that means removing some of the scrolling flourishes. And we're on page three where it's Antique Row in the large letter, and underneath it's Unique Shopping Dining and Art, that that could be Explore Kensington. And there's still then, you know, the hanging portion, whatever we need for keeping space for our banners and other things. But to have Antique Roads a Destination along with Explore Kensington, which is part of the fully inclusive brand for the town. But that just comes down to design and space, so, you know, when it comes to the, the vendor, you know. I realize these are like PowerPoint mockups, there are other mockups that is that. Within the realm of possible.
So bringing, uh, keep, so you're looking at number two as more of an option or trying to somehow.
Words of two, but, you know, keeping Antique Row, not diminishing the size of it, moving the Explore Kensington into this.
Into that second sign.
Yeah. But, but I, I stress once again, look. If somebody is going to send me an email about these flourishes or scrolls. I'm sorry, I'm not pro scroll flourishes, if we can get the Explore Kensington on the underside, but all the flourishes on top, all about the flourishes on top.
You can't really see as you're seeing that, you can sort of see them, but not quite, yeah. Okay, Gloria, you have to go to the front, I know, it's okay.
I was just, we're not talking about design. But, but we also have that Safeway sign and why, there's a competition design wise between the Safeway sign. And the ruffles and flourishes, I agree, there's too many flourishes for today's. Design billboard type signs, and there should probably be a whole unification of whatever is going on there, it's very cluttered looking. I think it'd be much more powerful if it was one sign that included Safeway in there as well somehow. But uh, I don't know that it, that might be a whole new design.
Well, I don't think I want to pay for Safeway sign, but uh.
Well, and then you, what about all the other businesses that don't have an individual store?
Yeah.
Name.
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with you, they seem far enough away, I'm looking at a picture of it now, it's not like it's in front of it, it's kind of behind it set back.
There are two different kinds of.
Well, that is definitely design wise.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we should probably, perhaps we could look at that as something.
Well, I mean, Shannon Baum can certainly, the picture that Connor's got up right now where it's showing the different signs can send that to them and they can see whether they could um. Balance that off, but I, I do agree with Connor, the little flourishes under Antique Row could go easily.
No problem with that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, Nate, and then I'll go to Anne.
Sorry, Anne, um.
When you're, when you're out of town, you're always last, sorry.
I've been there, um. So I tend to agree with Connor, um. In all due respect Darren, I, I think that. Yes, we're known for antiques, it's really important, puts us on the map, but. Things are changing and I don't, I don't. I don't want to say that people don't know Kensington or aren't knowing Kensington. Um, I think more consistently for food, for other types of shops, for.
Entertainment.
Entertainment, um, because I think that we are being put on the map for that now, businesses that have come over the last few years. So I also like the harmony between the two signs, West and Antique Row. So if there's a way to accommodate what Connor's saying, and I am the worst at design, but I was even thinking there's. If there's a way to play with the colors too, maybe putting yellow for, maybe not, but.
Well, Antique Row is in yellow, I don't know if you can see Connor's. It, this is just, again, this is just a mockup, but it is in yellow.
One in yellow like it is now, and then the other in white, just to show some contrast, so your placemaking with. Um, the color like West Howard could be in yellow or Antique Row could be in yellow, and then the Explore Kensington could be in white. Just an idea for the designers as they, they consider it, because um, I do think it's helpful to have. That new branding, but also keeping the old one that has been successful to some extent and the size of it, because I think that is really important for that.
Okay, good, right, uh, Anne?
Thank you, um, I also like having Explore Kensington incorporated into the Antique Row sign, I like the first option. I recognize that some of the spacing and design elements need to be modified for visibility and the other points that have been brought up. Um, and I think it does a nice job of balancing the historic um, presence and significance of Antique Row as Margaret points out. Along with the diversity of the new stores that we have, and I also disagree with Darren and that I think we are known for art, even more so with Compass opening. Um, our public art as well as all of the artists that we have in, in studio space and in shops. Uh, and our unique shopping, so I like, um, I like the new approach, uh, and I think I have confidence that a design team can balance. Both the past with, with the present, um, and who we are as a community. So that's my, that's all for now.
Okay, so just for clarity, uh, you said you prefer one, the Explore Kensington at Antique Row, okay.
And I guess for the record, I would too, because that one is at least a similar possible to the, to the one for West Howard. But either, I think.
But you'd be okay with two as well, but, okay, well, so what, sorry Darren, so, uh, I think what we'll do is, um. We'll send it up to Shannon Baum and have them do both. Type, you know, one and two, and provide some designs that we can look at.
But just to try to figure out where, where the bulk of us are at, um. But I might be misinterpreting what I heard Connor say, but I, I, I think the size of the letters is important. And so I, I wouldn't mind putting, as long as we keep the Antique Row letters as big as they are and at the top. I, I don't mind Explore Kensington as like a, a hanging sign with maybe a.
Well, instead of a hanging sign, it would actually be attached to the posts, so it doesn't look like an afterthought, it would be part of the sign, it's just.
I just, I don't, I, I really do, I don't want the Antique Row. At least not right now, to be lost in other words, because I, I think, you know, the drivers are focused on a lot of other things. I, I've said it already, but I think we do give a lot of other notice about the other businesses in other signs, I would just like this to be the. Big focus.
Okay.
And so I don't, I, I, I don't mind adding it, I just, I mind adding it at the expense of the size of Antique Row.
Okay, so you would be, you'd be okay with number two, just moving Explore Kensington down into the. Num, uh, the second sign that's underneath while keeping it the Antique Row, the larger size, is that what I'm understanding, okay, okay. All right. Tyler, go ahead, yeah, please.
I said I wasn't really going to cut in on this.
You're, you're a business owner that we, I know, marketing group, so yeah.
Well, as a graphic designer by trade, uh, that's what I studied in school. Um, I think um, from a design perspective, uh, the typography. Um, is a big component of this. I think if Antique Row uh, was kept at the serif font and then maybe Explore Kensington and Unique Shopping. Dining Art or maybe a sans serif font, so that there was some distinction. Um, it's actually also easier to read a sans serif font. Um, so that might be a consideration for your designers to look at.
Okay, that's fine. You know, did Shannon Baum design this sign, do you remember?
He did not, uh, it was, it was put in during the streetscape, um, we might have a record of that.
I had the picture.
I think what we'll do is, and we'll work with Carrie Anne a little bit first, uh, because Shannon Baum, they have designers, but they're not quite.
I'm sure this is, this is for Carrie Anne, I really doubt.
I think, I think we should. Maybe come up with a little clearer design, maybe send it over to Shannon Baum to mock something up, because they're not going to be able to maybe necessarily do what we think they can do.
Okay.
Are they more, they're going to build the sign, not necessarily design it.
Okay, well, I think maybe, um, instead of putting Carrie on, Carrie Anne on it, we'll maybe find someone else that can do that, so.
Yeah, I think we just need to clean this a little, clean this up a little bit for, for Shannon Baum.
Okay, that's fine.
There's.
Oh, Rita, sorry.
Can everybody see me?
Yep.
Okay.
And here.
Hi, well, I guess I hear, anyway, um, is there any intention on adding lighting to the sign? I couldn't remember if there was lighting.
There actually is lighting underneath, right now, there's some bushes that really need to be trimmed back and then the lighting needs to be, uh, looked at. But yeah, that would be part of the refurbishment.
Okay, was just wondering, because I know, you know, everything kind of shuts down a little bit earlier, but then some of us might want to. Keep open a little bit later, and then so I think with a little bit more brightness to it and, you know, illumination to the sign, it could also. Represent some of us being open a little bit later as well.
Right, no, I agree, yeah, that's part of the refurbishment would be um, upgrading the lighting, because that lighting is also twenty plus years old. And the bushes have definitely overgrown a little bit in that space.
We have you, can I ask, since you're a non antique business, oh, I guess your music and.
They're vintage again.
I guess we can fall in a few categories, I suppose.
How do you feel about adding the Explore Kensington?
Uh, uh, I'm for it, um, I think it's definitely inclusive, um, you know, we do kind of fall in that line. Um, of being, you know, sellers of vintage items and, you know, things like that, but, you know, does it. Mean that they're antiques, no, not exactly, um, a lot of people that we have come and visit the store. You know, they're, they didn't know we're there, of course, because one, the sign doesn't say anything about music, you know, arts can be. You know, here and there, um, but also when you see antique really big, they just, they know of the antique store, so they're just not aware. And so, you know, whatever makes a little bit more inclusive for some of us, um, we're for it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Margaret.
I'd like to add to the horticultural point, that the evergreen bushes that are there at the bus stop, the bus shelter on Connecticut Avenue. Need the gas station.
Oh, yeah, I know it's.
Evergreens Bus Shelter.
Yeah.
They're way overgrown and they intrude into the Connecticut Avenue and they obstruct the view to a large degree depending on where you're waiting in traffic.
Yeah, we have taken um, a section of that out as far as we can, but it's in, not in our right of way. So we can't go in there and trim it.
Prevail upon the people who are.
Well, if you wanna talk to them, good luck with, good luck with Safeway and the Shell Station.
To the question of lighting, uh, is the idea to uplate it?
So it's up late now, uh, we replaced the lights, uh, last year with LED lights, but there was some obstruction from vegetation, I just want to bring up one point, the sign. Highlights our sign ordinance.
Bi- legs are sign.
Oh, great, um, now, I mean, it really does.
No, it kind of makes it.
Um, and it's just a question that I thought I'd bring up with the council, I mean. I mean, we we can. I mean, we can look at some other design options, I mean, I don't know if the council, and from the feedback we got tonight, I mean, do we really, do we want to stick with this, or do we want to do something different?
Is it because it's too high?
It's way too high.
Hmm.
We would never permit this.
Right.
Um, we are not advertising a specific business, obviously, we can exempt ourselves, but this is not a sign that we would ever allow in the town. Um, at this point, so, you know, maybe we take this opportunity to step back and maybe find a better. Design option and then come back and figure out the language, um, or we can just proceed with this existing sign and update the language, so.
Personally, I do not have a problem with having a bigger sign and one that is. I, you know, strongly identifies with the Kensington brand, I would be willing to override our sign ordinance. As we have been doing, apparently.
You can get up there and talk, it's an open meeting, Tom.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Tom Brawd, I'm a business owner at Kensington, um, I strongly support um, a bigger sign for you all. Um, and I uh, support more than one, so I think in front of the Baker's Union, there ought to be a sign. Um, we're willing to partner with you all and work when you come from Montgomery County at Summit and Knowles, maybe we can work something out there, so more science is great. Um, I always Matt wanna, I don't understand the Berka sign on the other side of the street. It is so far out of regulations that I've never really understood why, and I certainly welcome, if you're comparing signs, I would, you know. Give four of your beautiful signs and, and I don't mean to talk negatively about a wonderful business owner and a wonderful family, I'm just saying. The ordinance, uh, you you know, I'd rather see your beautiful sign bigger than, you know. That white sign next to the gas station on the other side of the street, and I wish you all well with the decision, and it's lovely to see so many passionate people about Kensington.
Okay, thank you. Alright, well, we have been on this topic for a while and we've got other things on the agenda, so it sounds like, um. Uh, you guys are willing to stick with this type of sign, just so uh, we know how to move forward, is that what I'm hearing from the council, or you wanna?
Yeah, I'd be willing.
To exempt it, okay, so I think we're, uh, so I think that's cool, that's the great thing about being a government, you can exempt your own rules sometimes. So, uh, and then we will, um, look for a designer and then we'll be back, so no decisions have been made today, we have good direction though. And uh, we'll put it back on the, on a future agenda. Okay, okay, thank you very much, oh, Georgina, you're gonna have to go up there, sorry.
My name is Georgina Lou, and I lived in Kensington for over forty-five years, and um, I do have a shop on Antique Row now. And I do support this number three.
Number three.
But I I have another suggestion that's off the wall, I'm hearing impaired.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't hear a lot of what went on when some of the people were speaking, and I was wondering if the. Microphones could be louder or people could be asked to speak in them a little bit, because I missed a lot of things tonight. And I'm sure you're probably not aware of it, especially if you do hear, okay, but when you get old like me, things get like this happen, so. You might want to think about getting the microphone just a little bit louder for those of us who are hearing impaired.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, I'm sorry you didn't speak up and say that I can't hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, what's that?
Matt's saying, for future reference, the speaker is in the back, so if you sit a little closer to the back, you may be able to hear the. The microphone, and we'll talk louder too, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But never be afraid to say, speak up, we are happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're good, uh, and we will, um, let everybody know and we'll bring this back on the agenda, but we'll be looking more for uh, design. And with the two options that the council kind of split on tonight, okay, right, moving on. Alright, so. Let's go down, uh, Tom, looks like you're up. Yeah, I did. I've tried to, I'm trying to get the people that are here taken care of first, yes. Go ahead, Tom, sorry.
Uh, good evening, everyone, my name is Tom Brawd, I'm the president of Woodside Builders, and I'm here this evening to answer any questions and support. Uh, the town on uh, adding a public improvement at the end of Kaiser Place, just off of the intersection of Knowles and Summit Avenue. Um, really at your service, Madame Mayor, and uh, if you want to ask questions or. Whatever, uh, we have the materials and we're ready to finish a public improvement item, uh, early.
Uh, Matt, do you want to just quickly go over?
Um, the town previously, um, provided the end of Kaiser Place, um. As designated, uh, the public right away as a public plaza to help offset. The requirement for the Flats project, which is actually located on the uh, north side of Knowles Avenue. So not on the same side where the existing plaza is going to be located, as a requirement with Montgomery Planning for public's, public space. Um, Mr. Brawd started, I guess we'll call it phase one of the plaza. Uh, last year and completed that, uh, and he has requested, uh, to move forward with what he's classifying as phase two. Of the plaza prior to the construction of the Flats project, uh, the staff asked him to hold off. Um, Mr. Brawd was here this evening to request permission to move forward, uh, to complete the plaza prior to. Uh, starting construction on the Flats project.
What is the status of the Flats project? I mean, I understood you had it up for sale, is that correct?
Um, no.
Okay. So what's the status?
Uh, we're trying to break ground between July one and September sixth.
Okay, have you submitted for, um, uh, permits?
Yes, two years ago.
So that fast, huh?
It's been grueling.
Yeah, I bet.
Are you, Tom, are you missing permits from the county, or just what you've submitted for them, but what's the status of all?
Uh, we're close to achieving them, um, there are a number of items that we need, uh, to break ground, uh, this summer.
Correct.
Um, uh, we look forward to partnering with the town, there are a couple items with you all that would be helpful. And there's a couple items with the county that we're working through right now.
And why do you want to do this now?
Uh, because we have the ma- material there at the end of the road, and it's just better to finish it rather than, you know, move the material three or four times.
So on this bigger sheet that we've been given, is phase one blue and phase two green? So this is what was included within the covenant that we signed, um, with the Flats project. And the the green is essentially phase two. Yeah, yeah, so. So, so he's done face, he's done blue. He's done blue. And wants to do green. Correct. They just, and what do we think of that, from the staff perspective? Uh, I mean, is there, would that make it?
Why did you ask him to hold off?
Uh, we asked him to hold off because he does not have the building permits for the Flats project. Uh, we wanted him to start the project at the Flats before he proceeded with the public space, part of the agreement for the plaza. And and what is the risk to us if he, I mean, I hear he's gonna start July, September, what is the risk to us if he does the green now? And something happens with the project across the street? We, we, we are just looking, you know, the position was the sidewalk was put in part of the agreement with the pass. Uh, and we were looking at maybe just making a simple connection, and then waiting for the completion of the project for the public plaza to be put in with. The voting permit of the project, um, like I said, the staff's position on this was. We wanted to hold off until we actually had the building permits and the construction project begin on the Flats project, um, so we knew that the project was gonna move forward.
But is there a risk?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Is phase two both sections of green, Tom? I don't think it's, this is elevated, isn't it?
Forgive me, I'm not sure exactly what.
It's on the screen on the TV.
There's, so there's the the section of green that's in the one oh five oh nine. Flats parcel, and then there's a section of green that's at the end of Kaiser Place.
I I I don't think they're relevant, they're not tied together per se.
And so, but you're talking about just the part at the end of Kaiser Place?
Yeah, we have all the materials there, it's more convenience to the new homeowners.
Sure.
We're very happy to welcome six new homeowners to Kensington.
Yep.
Uh, having the roads sort of unfinished and the debris in in the way is is a problem, I wasn't actually aware of why, uh. Um, uh, we we've enjoyed the partnership with the town, um, I I must speak up in public and I hope everyone can hear me well. The Honorable Jared Solomon just came in from the state of Maryland, District eighteen teen, um, I'm very heart uh, warmed to to see him because of how. Uh, just a great group of representatives for our community, the entire District eighteen team is really. Dedicated, I hope Kensington understands how lucky everybody is to have, uh, you all and everybody cares so much about the local community. Uh, at any rate, we were just trying to make people happy and do the work early, um, there, there, there's an economic motivator for us that. My crew can do it cheaper, uh, without burdening a general contractor when we get going later, so, uh. Uh, it's easier for us to do it now with our own crew and who just finished building the plaza, make the townhouse people happy. And uh, I don't see any personal risk, I did study it at length, thank you very much, Matt. Uh, all of this work is directly in the town right of way. So we we are technically not entering the state right of way, which is an important feature to mention, and we're not in the county right of way either. And I thought, uh, the Honorable Sue Allen, the town attorney, did a fabulous job on the covenant, and I thank you for that. And uh, we executed mutually, and we're happy to do it, so, uh, it's more of a burden to the homeowners in the community to look at the mess if we don't do it.
Sure.
Uh, Nate's got a question too, so.
Go on. I I just was curious if you could describe this, what is the intention for phase two, is it only adding one of the, some of the bricks? That you brought, uh, and I thought there was some greenery, if I remember some tree planting, um, is that included, or is it just bricks? Yeah, so it's true. I thought so.
Um, I did review the agreement with Park and Planning, and you're looking at an exhibit from the signature set on the Flats project. And to my surprise, it did not include any greenery as a requirement. Um, uh, but I thought Matt and um, Alex were incredibly lovely and very um. Wonderful to work with on the streetscape on the front side of the townhouse project, we were asked to add an extra tree at no expense. And it laid out really well, and and the approval was for three street trees and, and we were more than happy to make uh, everybody happy and put in four.
I thought they were supposed to be four.
No, I think Matt read wrong, you know, it's confusing history, um, I I guess the point I'm making. Is, uh, we would do the greenery that we presented to Connor and the Development Review Board, and we would do that early. So, um, uh, we have no problem doing that, it's not expensive, and we'd we'd love to partner with Alex and. Matt again and and pick out the right ones, uh, and make it happen, uh, the the plan you're looking at, uh, shows three.
I see four, I see four.
I'm I'm talking about where we're cutting the pavement.
Mm-hmm.
So, forgive me for those that are online, if you want me to walk back.
Sorry.
But, and I don't know if people can see this well, but.
Um, the scope of services we were looking to do early as a benefit, um, would be to saw cut at the end of the road. It's removing about ten feet of the pavement of the end of Kaiser Place and replacing that with, um, plantings. Okay, um, and it's about a ten foot wide walking path. That we're required under the Flats to do, and it would be ADA related, and it goes, um, uh, it extends, uh. To the south side.
Okay, um, Anne, I see your hand up, did you have a question?
Yeah, my question was similar to Nate's, and um, I I wanted to know, and this is something we can follow up on, just to. Understand a little bit better what the plans are for planting and greenery, I think this came up before. That some of the members of our greenscape committee would love to provide input, and um, you know, there've been some comments about. Nandine and other things that were planted before that we'd like to to help shape that if possible, but I'm glad to hear that. That it will incorporate greenery, I think that's really important, and, um. At this point, if if we were able to have that type of consultation, I think I would be in support of. Going ahead and getting this done, because I agree, it it doesn't look great unfinished.
So is the material that's hot spot stockpile, that's the pavers, right? Now, there's.
Yes.
Trees waiting to be installed that are in bushels. And.
Correct, no trees have been purchased yet.
So I'm not hearing anybody expressing concern about installing the pavers. And if people, if we want a consulting role, consulting role as to what trees get planted. That seems to not hold up the papers. I I I guess, Matt, I I I'd sort of like to ask you, if you have concerns about the, um. The 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 build quality or something of that, of the papers area that he's proposing. Not necessarily, I mean, we. Can he work with you and have, if he's doing something you don't like, you know, work it out? So we, uh, at least phase one, the base, the base was put down by our contractor. Um, there was an agreement between, uh, Mr. Brawd and our contractor for that, and then Tom's team came in and put the rest of the papers in. I don't know if there's an agreement for phase two with that or not, obviously, we can make that connection again. Um, there is the vegetation requirement within the covenant, um, that was signed by the town and recorded. Um, it shows what benches are required, the vegetation, the plantings, everything like that, so it's already recorded in the covenant. Okay. The staff's position was simply, we just wanted to hold off, we wanted, you know, the council to get feedback before we move forward with phase two. Prior to the Flats having a permit on file and construction beginning, so.
Is there anything else that Tom would need outside of, is there any permits from us that he would need to do this, any bonds that he would need?
There's a row bond on file for the entire project.
Yeah.
Um, there's actually multiple row bonds, one's for utility, one is for work within the public right of way, the materials are at the end of the street now. Sidewalk's been installed, Mr. Brawd has repaid the town for the sidewalk installation, um, so. The opportunity to make the connection or to move into the phase two is.
And that is part of the motivation, we are, uh, trying to get our bonds back. And obviously, you can't get a bond back with a bucket of bricks, so it's a little bit of a chicken in the egg, but, um. Um, it it is a bit of a juxtaposition, um, we we need town help to finish getting the overall building permit. And the project going, and I want to be clear about that, and the the help has been going wonderful. And we really appreciate everybody on that, this was just trying to be nice and finish it a bit early, and I don't see any risk to anybody.
Okay, Tom.
We couldn't agree more about the greenscape, Anne.
Tom, why did you have me carrying some bricks with you, was there a decision to be?
Well, uh, to the great work of the the community here, um, I found it, uh, uh. Entertaining when I was chastised about seven years ago, and I, so why don't you just make it like the Bethesda Brick Pavers, right? And I was. And uh, I was uh very uh. Noted that Kensington wanted its own paper color and its own. Uh, you know, approach.
Yeah, I don't I don't recall that conversation, but.
Anyway, uh, I remember the, maybe it was a DRB with.
Yeah, it could be.
Uh, but uh, anyway, we 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 kept our commitment.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, well, um, council, do you have any further questions for Mr. Brawl?
No.
Okay, uh, anyone in the audience have a question for Mr. Brawl? Um, I can't see everybody online. Nobody has a question? Okay. All right, um, do you want to motion or do you wanna? No? Okay. We have a consensus that uh, or how long do you think this will take?
Uh, in May.
May.
So we, you know, I think mid-May, certainly by the end of the month of May, sure.
Okay.
So I'd be wanted it finished and sort of happy for the summer.
Okay.
And Tom, I I think this is an obvious, but I'll ask you. At the completion of this portion of the plaza, there will be no more construction material at the end of Kaiser Place?
Correct, we will then move it all. Uh, yeah, uh, uh, it is um noted that um, a a great citizen of town, Al Carr is here, so. We we would, uh, we've always respected everybody's concerns about. The bus movements and the whole interaction of that intersection in general, um, but we would. Clean everything up, get it out of the way and put it on uh our our parking lot. At the north of Brainerd and Summit, so we we kept thirty-four space parking lot up there, so we wouldn't even put it.
It'd be out of town.
Man, that's funny, Trace.
Yeah, it'd be out of town. Okay, all right. So uh, and Nate, Connor, Darren, everybody consensus for them to go ahead and move on? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. All right. They've done it good. Alright, so we're gonna move down to number four. And uh, we've uh, uh, should we stand in and applaud you, Jared, or? Yes, please come to come to the front.
Did you get the the garbage cans out that night?
Well, we very much appreciate you coming in, uh, particularly at a late night, we know on Monday. And uh, got most everything done. I'm sure that. They were Monday. They their last, I know what day it is. Obviously, you know.
Monday, late.
Monday, Monday night, maybe you can say it went into Tuesday.
Yeah, it did, it did.
But uh, I I'm sure the the Key Bridge probably really um.
It uh, so.
Which is a horrible, horrible.
Yeah, I mean, and obviously, you know, we have uh budget issues that we're working through and uh, one of the biggest budget issues that we were trying to resolve was our transportation trust fund and. As we were getting close to resolving that, the unimaginable issue with the bridge just uh certainly has not helped things, um, but. You know, the 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 way the state has rallied around the community and the way the uh, our congressional delegation and the president have really rallied around Baltimore. Um, has been incredible, so. You know, we will, we will rebuild, um, but it definitely did not make things any easier.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, absent the issue that I'm gonna talk about, um. I really think we made, you know, lemonade out of lemons. Uh, we certainly haven't fixed all of our issues. We're gonna have to come back next year and and tackle some of our structural. Debt is deficit issues, um, but I think on the trust fund, we made a really good down payment on transportation uh funding. We'll have to finish that next year, but um, hopefully, I know MML is gonna be pretty happy because we restored all the highway user revenue cuts. Um, that the governor had proposed, so. No matter what, we've uh, we've restored that. We added about three hundred and thirty million in new revenue in the trust fund side of things. Again, that. Fills the hole about maybe halfway where we but we got a firm commitment from the Senate President that we're gonna come back next year and finish the job, um, but that will allow a lot of. State of Good Repair, a lot of um, a lot of the highway user, well, all of the highway user revenues to be restored, the locally operated transit system funding, which for Montgomery County is really huge. It funds about eighteen million dollars worth of ride on, um, and will allow MDOT to start. Future work on capital projects that originally cut from the budget in December, and then next year, like I said, we're gonna come back and finish it. The the other really good news for for our community is. Sort of a roller coaster ride in November, um, MDOT released that they were going to be adding uh new service on the Brunswick line. Which some of us have been hoping for and working on literally for decades, um. And so then the budget came out in December, axed, uh, it's about a seven million dollar cost for that new service. They axed it. The hundred fifty million that the governor put in for uh, from the rainy day fund initially restores that service, so we are awaiting details, hopefully. Um, later in the spring.
So what is that service possibility?
It's probably, my understanding is going to be a a number of midday trains, uh, but they haven't come to full details on it yet.
Okay.
But that's seven million covers uh, the additional uh personnel costs and maybe one or two. Uh, new pieces of of rolling stock, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. We're hoping to get an update from them shortly. Um, we'll make sure that that you all get that. And then the other big thing, obviously, for not only Kensington, but but our region. Um, we begin to tackle the problems with Metro, um, and that's gonna be sort of a a a bigger issue between. Maryland, Virginia, and the District of Columbia, and it was actually an announcement today that MCAG is, you know, sort of has a handshake agreement. To fix this within the next year with all the regional governments, but. The governor's budget, even before we restored funding, included a hundred fifty million for this year and a hundred fifty million for next year, and then. For all years after, it's an additional two hundred fifty million.
Wow.
So it's a pretty sizable down payment uh for Maryland to restore um and get Metro's budget back to where it needs to be. And Metro shortfalls, frankly, some of it is the overall makeup of the budget, but inflation hit Metro's budget pretty hard and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, it hit everybody, um, but Metro actually also gave a substantial amount of money back to the state of Maryland and Virginia during the pandemic. Um, and they had federal aid, but what that did was it actually sort of reset um Metro's budget increases by a by a multiplier every year. And when they gave that money back, it set the multiplier lower than it should be, and so with the expiration of federal funds and sort of the lower threshold that they were at, because they were. They were good neighbors, so to speak, um, Metro, but it also had a hole, so. Um, we're hoping, fingers crossed, that MCAG can come to, you know, a regional agreement that we will. Have to consider in the next couple of years, but we don't want to be back in this position in five or ten years, um, after we fix it now, so. Spend a lot of time on transportation stuff, um.
And rightly so, I'm a little disappointed that electric cars were only charged fifty dollars a year or.
No, it's um, it's a hundred annual.
Oh, good.
And that, or it's a hundred for electric and I believe it's a hundred and twenty-five for, or I'm sorry, it's a hundred twenty-five for electric. For zero emission electrics and then a hundred annually for plug-in hybrids, plug-in or hybrids.
Okay, I think everybody should pay their fair share to keep those roads going.
Well, and I was gonna say, and I'm not a hundred percent sure if this also interacts with it, but there is, you know, it does, there is an additional. Registration, there will be an additional registration increase for cars based on the weight. And obviously EVs tend to be heavier because batteries weigh more, so. Do not quiz me, Connor, on exactly how much your Tesla weighs, but I would imagine that there is probably, that is probably one of the tiered thresholds.
Compared to my Mazda, it's probably.
But that was again, one of the other things, one of the ways that we generated some of this new transportation money, and I think uh, pretty. Pretty reasonable was if you're buying a car that's heavier, more wear and tear on the roads, and so we tiered the, um, we did tier the registration fees to reflect that, so.
Why not just get rid of the registration credit? This was when somebody buys an EV. The state gives them like two thousand, twenty-four hundred towards the registration.
Well, it's it's off the, it's off the total price of the vehicle.
No, you're you're, it's the six percent up to fifty thousand dollars. So you're paying up to.
No.
Twenty-five hundred of a registration credit, but now you're taking it back in an additional tax.
So do not quote me on this, but I don't believe that it's a registration credit. I believe it's just a straight tax credit, um, and we modified it this year, I think to. Um, I believe this year to mirror what's now at the federal level, that it's no longer, it can be essentially. A credit instead of a a rebate when you when you buy it in taxes. So I don't believe it's a registration, it's just a straight, you buy a car, meets a certain threshold, you get, you get a three thousand, it's a three thousand dollar credit. So.
You're still taking it back.
I I mean, I I guess the the difference is, you know, you're buying, your annual registration, which we now allow people to pay in installments. Is, you know, a smaller amount of money versus if you're taking the amount straight off the top of the car, it's gonna incentivize people in a way, and actually. I know this was a debate on the House floor, but EVs are almost uh at parity with uh with combustion engines. Um, in the last report that we saw.
Which is great. I mean, it really is. It is, it's very, it's really great.
Um, again, happy to talk about transportation, but I know that was not the topic of uh of discussion for today, um. But happy to take uh any and all questions, um, so uh, the mayor Furman had texted me, um, asking to come and give sort of an update on. Um, Senate Bill ten twenty-seven, which was the property tax uh appeal legislation, was also House Bill fourteen.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, thank you, um, but for all intents and purposes, um, ten twenty-seven was the bill that actually moved, um, so, you know, I think as most of you know, this was the. Uh, legislation that changed the definition of taxpayer in in uh in standards of appeals and then would have been retroactive. Um, so SB ten twenty-seven was for all intents and purposes, the 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 legislation that was actually moving. Came out of the Senate Budget and Tax Committee, was introduced by the Chair of uh of B and T, Chairman Gazoni. And then was cross filed in the House by the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, that has jurisdiction over taxes issues in the House, Vanessa Atterbury. Uh, I think for some of us, this caught us by a little bit by surprise, um, and actually appreciate some of the residents who uh who had emailed. That was really helpful, um, there's a lot of bills that move, um, I think we had over twenty-five hundred this year, so.
Wow.
Keep an eye on everything, um. And so it was really helpful to find that out, uh, the bill passed the Senate, I believe unanimously, um, the Budget and Tax Committee made a small change to it. We tried to weigh in, uh, we tried to have the county weigh in before it moved out of the Budget and Tax Committee. Because with the retroactive provision in it, would have cost Montgomery County, I think about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in in tax revenue, and it would have cost the town. I think what it was a hundred and sixty, I don't know, but it's a couple of days ago, um, and so I think a lot of us had concerns over that. We we often go to Annapolis to fight. Tooth and nail for every dollar for our county, um, and our local jurisdictions, and so. A bill that frankly was introduced at the behest of, we believe, a handful of people, uh, times some uh. Some individuals who uh often like to use outsized influence, frankly, um, without naming them, um. We were a little frustrated as a, I think as a delegation in the House, and so when the bill came over to to the House of Delegates, um, we are very well represented on the Ways and Means Committee. Um, Delegate Wilkins, who represents Silver Spring, is the vice chair of the committee, um, Delegate Palakovich Carr. Who is a subcommittee chair and kind of the, one of the gurus on on tax policy in the state, she represents the city of Rockville, um. And we have a couple of other folks on the committee as well, um, so a number of us kind of huddled and, you know, I think the, there was a a policy. Agree, and there was a policy disagreement, and then there was also the the nature of this being retroactive, which I know. The Chair of the Subcommittee of Local Revenues, um, Delegate Atar, requested an Attorney General's letter, the ruling from our Attorney General for the. General Assembly was that the um likely retroactive nature of the bill was not super. Super likely to pass constitutional muster if challenged, um, and so I think even before we received this letter, frankly, again. Many of us had an issue with, um, which would seem to be a bill that was targeting revenue loss for just two jurisdictions, and again. It's hard for us as legislators to stomach our jurisdictions having to give money back.
But this is a statewide bill, correct?
It is a statewide bill, but um, in the fiscal note, um, that that the Department of Legislative Services put together, it was clear that. As far as they knew, this really only applied to the two properties that were that were challenged in the town of Kensington. So it would have cost again Montgomery County local revenue and then it would have cost uh the town revenue. Um, so that was a huge issue for us, um, even absent the constitutional issues with the provision, so. Um, you know, again, well represented on the committee, uh, I weighed in, as did, um, you know, Delegate Chetty, both as members of leadership in the, you know, the Speaker's team. Just kind of put this on folks radar that typically, typically we don't advance bills that tend to take revenue back from jurisdictions, um, but again, there was also a policy. Concern, um, you know, that I think some folks on Ways and Means had, that this policy has been on the books for a long time. And if you read the Attorney General's uh ruling that we got, um, it does actually make it pretty clear that in nineteen eighty-five, um, the Attorney General. Uh, at that point, Attorney General Sachs actually, and the Supreme Court had ruled that the intention of this provision, as it was written in statute, was to give. Any taxpayer the ability to challenge an assessment, um, I think as the committee.
They don't own.
That they don't own, yeah, so I think that is a policy area that clearly the House and the Senate wanted to grapple with, so. What ultimately wound up happening was the Ways and Means Committee, um, it seems like, and in talking to my colleagues on it, made the decision that. They were comfortable leaving the commercial property assessment as is, essentially that anybody had a vested interest in a commercial property. Paying a fair rate of taxation. They did add a fee provision to it that said if you did want to challenge a property that was not yours, that you didn't have a a personal interest in. It was, I think they they applied a new hundred dollar fee to it, and they did change it to say that you could not challenge the property assessment of somebody's residential property.
Cause right now you can.
Right now you can.
And I think that got lost, that people were just thinking it was commercial, but it is also residential.
Exactly, and I.
It's a little odd if you don't like your neighbor's addition and you say, hey, I think you need to be reassessed.
So that.
I don't like your addition.
I think in in conversations with the folks on Ways and Means, that seems like a very reasonable compromise to say that, yes, if you're, you know, if you're feuding with your neighbor or. Maybe you wanna, you're interested in buying a property, you know, down the block or in another neighborhood that you want to lower the assessment on, um. You shouldn't necessarily have the ability to do that on a residential property, but the committee felt that the sort of checks and balances on commercial property was reasonable. Again, they did add that fee, so that bill, uh, the the bill as amended in the Ways and Means Committee, um, I guess late. Early this week, late late last week, um, basically struck the retroactive provision, again, I think there were concerns with that and then constitutional issues. It then amended the bill to uh. Leave the commercial property intact, add the fee, and then strike the ability for anybody to challenge uh, challenge something on a residential property. That bill uh passed out of the Ways and Means Committee, I believe unanimously, passed out of the House, I believe unanimously, but um. There were a lot of things that sort of got a little gummed up at the end, um, to be honest with you. We had a number of bills that that kind of died with or on the vine a little bit, we had. I had, the the only bill that I'm actually personally most disappointed about was a local bill, um, that didn't make it out of the proceedings committee, so there were some things that just. Ran out of time, uh, and so this is a bill, it's it was sent back to the Senate. I don't know exactly how the Budget and Tax Committee would have considered this. I don't know if they would have just concurred, or if they were wedded to the bill that they passed out of the committee, um, but the long story short is. There wasn't enough time for the two committees to either conference or reconcile their differences, so I do not know what this means for the bill for next year, um, again, I think. From our perspective, what came out of the Ways and Means Committee seemed pretty reasonable, um, and, you know.
Well, most likely if it's brought back, it's not gonna be on an emergency basis.
No, no, and and I was gonna say, I mean, the emergency nature of it, I think, was also. Um, I think some folks on the Ways and Means Committee, again, felt like this is something that's been on the books for a long time, and it hasn't really been an issue, and again, there was an intent. For the way that the statute was written, um, and so. Uh, you know, in talking to some of my colleagues on the committee, I believe they were a little hesitant also about the emergency nature, and I think the bill. Now that you mentioned it, I believe the House bill struck the emergency provision and just made it a normal, um, and and now you may know this better, I believe tax bill was going to affect in. July? Policy bills tend to go into effect in October, um, so this would have gone into effect normal, uh, as normal on on July one of of this year had it passed, so.
Well, we have a, I mean, Matt can correct me, but the the particular property we're talking about, they have not paid the property tax, so they've not, you know, whatever this windfall that we're supposedly getting. We've not received it.
Yeah.
Or the county, cause they're they're uh appealing.
Right.
And and quite honestly, they should appeal it, cause the way, um, Matt, or you have it in front of you, Connor, um. It's, I mean, they they didn't, they didn't raise the actual property tax. They raised, what do they call it? What's on the improvements? Thirty million dollars.
Yeah, the land value, the two dollar unchanged, which just strikes us. That seems weird.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the last uh permit that was pulled, not sign wise, but was in nineteen eighty-seven. So how in the world that it raised thirty million dollars, which just, I mean, that's. I know, I mean, I'm just saying that this is why we didn't really jump into it, because the appeal process is going to go through, they haven't paid us.
Yeah.
So they're gonna, obviously, I think, adjust that, because that would be the most expensive piece of property in town over Modena, over Kaiser. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And the fact that. I didn't, we don't like the idea of third parties, particularly on residential property, which seemed to got completely.
Yep.
Not mentioned.
Yep.
That currently you can appeal a the, you know, a residential property.
Correct, well, and again, I think that is why the Ways and Means Committee, um, you know, chose to make the amendments that they did, um, you know, we obviously don't influence. Estat's process and in reassessment.
Sure.
That's for them to do it, but again. I I think there were concerns about a bill that seemed to be targeting. Two specific assessments.
Correct, and and I and I get that.
Yeah.
But I think if I got a thirty million increase on my property, I would repeal that.
When you say two assessments, well, I I know about thirty seven hundred.
I guess maybe it was just, it was just the one, for some reason, I thought it was two, but.
One in Rockville? I don't know, it seemed in our.
I don't have the fiscal note in front of me, but I thought, I thought the fiscal note mentioned two. I don't have the fiscal note in front of me, but I thought, I thought the fiscal note mentioned two properties, but maybe, maybe it was just the one.
Well, or it has two addresses, it's just possible, it's good pieces of property. I do think the.
What, when, and the other thing, Jared, is when you you talked about the Attorney General looked back to, I think it was nineteen eighty five. Do we know how many of these assessment appeals were filed by non, you know, people unrelated to the property owners in those forty five years, fifty years?
Uh, no, I do not.
It almost seems like, I mean, I I I hear that they said this was intended to be this way. Then it never, I think, hasn't been used that way for the past forty, forty five years. It was used that way in this one instance. And then the legislature was asked to say, is this really what you need?
Right.
And 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 the answer seems to be no, from the broadest perspective, but we're, we may allow it in these limited situation of commercial with a fee.
Yeah. Well, again, I was not here in nineteen eighty five, so I'm just telling you.
How old were you in nineteen eighty five?
Depending on when in nineteen eighty five, it was either very young or nonexistent. But again, the the Attorney General's letter makes it clear that there was a ruling in the Supreme, the Maryland Supreme Court made a ruling that said every taxpayer has a financial interest in seeing that all property in the state, properly the subject of taxation, should be taxed. It goes on as well. And then the Attorney General, General Sachs, in nineteen eighty five, made a ruling that saying the statute authorizing any taxpayer to appeal a property tax assessment historically had been understood as granting a right to seek a higher assessment on another taxpayer's property. So, I mean, again, that is the, that was the ruling in eighty five, I don't know why anybody hadn't used it since then. But again, I think the reasonableness of taking residential property out of it, I think for all of us.
Create a lot of chaos if you have a lot of armchair, armchair tax assessors that are just
Well, again.
Picking and choosing, I don't know.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's up to Estat to to make the determination. I mean, I'll be honest with you, there has been an issue, I know that counties have raised on numerous occasions of, frankly, developers buying a property, seeing the property out.
Right.
The developers can ask for reassessment, dramatically lowering the assessment, because a vacant property is obviously assessed significantly lower than a full property. They go back, make their improvements, and there isn't necessarily the opportunity for the county to go back and reassess. It's an issue that has come up, I know that's been raised by several counties, not just Montgomery.
Right.
So I I am not an expert on the assessment process by any stretch, and I don't serve on the Ways and Means Committee. But again, I think smarter people than I, than than me had considered this for a long time. And as we looked at it, you know, again, I think the the committee made a determination that residential property versus commercial property is a different determination. And if ultimately Estat makes a determination on the value of a property, that's on them. You know, the appeal does not mean that the property value has to change. It just means that Estat takes another look at it. And I will admit, I'm not a hundred percent an expert, I'm not a hundred percent certain exactly how the appeal process works, what they, you know, what a resident or a taxpayer would have to do in order to even just initiate the appeal. So, you know, again, we'll leave that to Estat, I don't serve on the committee that that has sort of the the nuts and bolts control over that. But, you know, again, that seemed to be the Ways and Means consideration. And my sense would be if this bill comes back next year, which it probably likely will, it will probably be in the compromise form that Ways and Means had put it together.
Well, I definitely grant, I think, third party on residential is is probably a good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, the the appeal will work itself out. And then the county and the town will be awarded whatever the, you know, they come up with. I don't think it'll be what it currently is at, though. I mean, I think there is, we were speculating that maybe the cost of the property included the actual business, which was purchased at the same time, which I think would be a different type of tax, not part of your property tax. But I'm not a property tax lawyer. So.
I just want to thank you for advocating for us and all the other, I guess, all the residents who who did so. I was under the impression that because it was under appeal, that we weren't, that that we were advised not to take an active stance on it. But it sounds like you were fighting very hard on that behalf, so. Thank you.
No, I I I mean, I again.
And the the rest of the delegation, too. One question I had for for next year, if it comes up, is this, is this something that, I mean, I think it'd be interesting to hear from you too, Al, because you were, you did file an appeal of the initial assessment. But the residential versus commercial, where the delegation stands on that issue? I know you said generally the, the, the.
I was gonna say, so, yeah, I mean, so everybody theoretically in the House is on record. Actually, I can pull it up. I believe the vote on the Senate version of the bill as a.
That was unanimous.
Was unanimous, yeah. So technically, we are all, or I'm sorry, it was a hundred and one to thirty four.
For the Senate?
For the Senate bill. I think when, to be honest with you, I think when our Republican colleagues see anything with tax in it, they automatically vote no. And this bill, no offense, but it it this passed, I believe, I think it was signed and die, and we were moving very quickly through bills. And often, people who haven't, who don't serve on the committee, who just sort of see something, see it, and often vote no. So it was a hundred and one to thirty four. But I believe all the Democrats voted yes. So, yeah, we did this on Sunday die. So my guess would be that the delegation would be in the same position, and it and it wouldn't be a local bill. Again, so the delegation, really, our our delegation doesn't have an opportunity to sort of weigh in or offer any formal. So if it's a local bill, it it will not be considered by the full chamber unless it gets out of delegation. This one, as introduced, will just go right to the Ways and Means Committee. And again, everybody's on record supporting this. So I would assume, again, having, not having talked to to Chair Atterbury, I would assume that this bill will be back next year, probably in the form that it passed.
But and obviously not as an emergency bill, which makes it better anyway, in the sense of working its way through the system.
Yeah. And again, I think in our minds, you know, whether you agree or disagree with the assessment, we felt like that should be worked out by Estat. And they should be the ones to ultimately make that determination. And and, you know, I think the, my my sense of what the committee's action was, that, you know, a hundred dollar fee may deter somebody from doing it punitively.
Well, and I I, as I said, I think the the assessment will be worked out through the appeal.
Correct.
And then they will pay whatever comes up, because, you know, whatever's determined.
Yep.
Can I ask one more question? Not not to you, but actually to Matt, because I think in the explanation of taking a non position, the, there was an issue around whether we would actually get a windfall or not with some adjustment that would need.
The constant yield, I think.
Can you describe that a little more for the rest of the community?
So when we, in our operating budget, this is written out. So if you're not following me, read our operating budget, it's written out. We were concerned when this first was brought before us, that we were going to lose our tax exemption because of the fifty five million dollars in the increased assessment. The assessment, we found out and clarified with at, with the state, that the constant yield was removed last year. So it was, it no longer became an issue. However, within the budget, I mean, I'm, you know, honestly, we we are very concerned about the assessment. We we do not believe it's for seventy six million dollars based on anything else in this community. We subtracted fifty five million dollars out of our assessment base on our revenues for this fiscal year with the anticipation that this will be appealed and won at a level that is, it is now, or prior to twenty twenty two, or somewhere, you know, in a more reasonable range of thirty million, you know, twenty five to thirty million dollars. So we didn't want to risk within the budget stating that we were going to receive revenues that we didn't think we were really going to receive. So it's written out in our operating budget that we did reduce the assessment base fifty five million dollars in anticipation of the appeal being won. If you look at the surrounding properties that have been improved, they are nowhere near this. They are anywhere between thirteen million and twenty five million dollars.
Which properties?
So Kaiser Permanente, who has seen significant improvements over the last twenty four months, is valued at around thirteen, fourteen million dollars. Now, the lot is smaller, but they've seen improvements. They're a medical facility, they they have permits constantly. Medina was a huge project in this town, one of the largest projects we've seen. Their assessment value is, I don't, it was in the twenty range. So to have a seventy six million dollar assessment, we understand, we've always known that this property's worth a lot of money, it's a very large property, they've not had a building permit improvement on file with us since nineteen eighty six. If you look at the Estat reassessment, the entire increase goes to the structures, improvements. There's no change in the land value. So we were concerned about that. The public record of the sale included the physical business of the storage unit. They took the assessment value that included the physical business, the operational business of the storage unit. So, you know, when we were looking at this, we're not looking at the bill, we were looking at it as revenue for us. How are we going to determine this? Is this going to affect us down the road? Do we, you know, do we think we're actually going to get these revenues? We did not feel that comfortable. So we made the determination to remove the phased in assessment on the property.
Okay, thanks.
I have a, I have a question. Matt, thank you for that explanation. Did you, in the process of trying to figure out what was going on with the assessment? As you noted, it's out of line with other nearby properties. Did you talk to Estat? Do you know if they're aware that the town has these concerns?
Yeah, so we spoke with, we spoke with Estat. The commercial properties are actually done at a local level, so Estat has a Montgomery County division that does the evaluation, it's not the state. There is an appeal process, obviously, we're not going to get involved in that. So we're going to let that, you know, itself. The property would have been reassessed within the general cycle in twenty twenty five. My guess is the appeal again will probably come in in a lower rate, we're not really sure. We looked at this more of a budgeting standpoint, more than taking a position on the bill. We just wanted to make sure their revenue streams were as accurate as we could. We didn't want to say we were going to generate revenue on something that we didn't. We run into a budget issue, so.
Okay, and one more clarifying question. I had a hard time hearing you at the beginning of your statement. Am I correct that you said the constant yield clause was removed or altered last year and would not affect this situation?
Correct. So the constant yield was removed, as long as we keep the tax rate the same as we had it the previous year, it is not classified as an increase previously. If your revenues exceeded twenty five thousand dollars, you would get, you know, if there's less than, you get an exemption. Otherwise, you'd have to basically put out to the public that you're providing a tax, or you're increasing the property taxes. So that was removed, so that kind of took that.
And also, to, if we raise the tax rate, the actual action we can take, then we have to notice.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and I think there was a lot of, you know, smaller municipalities like us, I mean, if you have an assessment, if you're in this assessment cycle, I mean, you could, you could go over that exemption without realizing it very quickly, and then all of a sudden you have a tax increase, but it's really not generating that much.
And then the result is we would have to reduce our tax rate to keep constant yield.
And what we were very concerned about is we thought we were going to lose, we thought we were going to lose our exemption after lowering our tax rate and then not get that additional phase in. So, you know, the budget has been a challenge for us. You know, we we were trying to figure things out in the beginning when we were normally getting solid numbers. So, you know, just to get ahead of, there are going to be some amendments that we'll make at the next meeting to the budget. It it's not as clean as it's been the last few years, as we've been trying to figure out some numbers, so.
Yeah, my only comment back to Jared, I appreciate you letting Estat do their thing. Why I was confused in my confidence to the town manager were that when I look at the Estat's assessment of thirty seven hundred pliers mill, the land value is completely unchanged over time, seven point nine million. And all they did was alter the improvements number to get to the sale price. So that, I mean, the assessment is seventy six point two five million, which is, I'm looking up the exact sale price of that property. And so I wonder if that's a common practice of, well, that's what the market bears, and that must be what it's worth, and we'll just, that's not really an assessment, that's just changing.
Yeah, I mean, look, I, again, I'm not an expert on the way that Estat does its assessments. You know, I think in general, we, being the General Assembly, is are are hesitant to sort of step in when it seems like a bill is targeted at one specific property. That there is a process that Estat has to review things, there's a process that people have to appeal on both sides. And so, you know, absent whether the town or the county ever see the additional revenue, in addition to the fiscal issues, we wanted to just make sure that this wasn't something that was rushed through, sort of fly by night, that, you know, there was an opportunity for the committees to fully consider it, there was an opportunity for Estat to work its process out. I mean, and that's, I think, why the committee, why Ways and Means made the decision that they did.
Yeah, I'm just wondering to the town manager's point earlier, so Medina's property, one oh five four oh Metropolitan, has an assessed value, total value of twenty five million. But it's a seventy five million dollar development.
It was, yeah, it was a seventy five million dollar project.
So how it came out, like, again.
Yeah.
Mark, but it seems like if you do an arms length transaction, then it's the full market value. But if you build a brand new, so I'm thinking about all these other jurisdictions where hundred million dollar buildings are going in, but they're being assessed at thirty cents on the dollar.
Yeah.
Versus.
Buy a property initially.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so I have, I have not dug in super deeply, but that is.
I think nobody needs to be on the Ways and Means Committee.
That was an interesting conversation, yeah, we we deal with how to spend the money, not how to, how to raise the, how to, how to adjust the tax rates. And I'm sure every developer that is listening is probably having a slight heart attack if you talk through the difference between building versus transacting. But that's a, that's an interesting question, Connor. I mean, certainly, you know, we've worked with Estat before, I did have a bill two years ago, we discovered that there was no process actually to get a defunct business removed from, we had a constituent reach out who was being harassed by process servers, because somebody who had lived in their house fifteen years earlier had defaulted on several loans, and that was the address listed on the business, even though they hadn't lived there. And Estat did not actually have a process, short of the business owner calling and removing their own address. There was no process for a resident or the the occupier of that property to get that business removed. So we worked with Estat and actually got a, got a process put in place. But that is, that's about as much as I know in terms of my level of expertise on on minutia of Estat. But that's an interesting question, I mean, certainly we can, we can pose it to them and and talk through it. Yeah, I mean, I know enough about tax policy to tell you that often these, these kinds of things are made deliberately. Certainly at the federal level, there's usually very deliberate choices. So I wonder if there was a, at some point, deliberation made that if you spend the money to develop a property, the assessment should be different, I, and it's just me speculating, I I don't know. It's an interesting question, though.
Obviously, we we want everybody to pay their fair share, that's for sure, because, you know, the county, state, you know, town, you know, we all need the extra money. But yet, on the other hand, you don't want to discourage people from purchasing properties and doing developments in the, because you make money that way, too.
Correct.
So it's, there's that fine
Yeah.
line there that you have to walk. So it's ten of nine, we've not had the budget hearing, so I think, one last comment.
Incentivization, also to the mayor's point is, but I don't, whether it's on residential property or commercial property, also a practice, I don't know that that's what's happening, but a practice that we're just gonna, whatever it sells for, that's the the value. Incentivizes those who can find creative ways to transact their property, maybe to another family member at a discounted rate, something that is less than what the true market value would be, not only diminishes the tax revenue to the taxing jurisdiction, but it certain, you know, it it puts them at an advantage over their neighbors, who might not be able to do that. And if you can do it on commercial properties as well.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Like I said, I do not know the answer. Yeah, I I am jolly down with the huge things to to take back to Estat at some point during.
This with all the discussion around this bill and this issue that led us to no position. And Graham, in timing, it was favorable that you just finished your session, we could talk about it.
Yeah.
Well, it's difficult, difficult for us, we don't, A, we we should not be debating issues over the list, which is private. And we had not been meeting, so, you know, we had not meet, met
Yeah.
to discuss it in public. So we really appreciate you coming back, it didn't pass, so, you know, we haven't received any money. I mean, there's just all the, you know, nothing lost here, but I think it's been a teachable moment, educating us and on, you know, on this issue, so.
I think it has been a teachable, teachable moment for a lot of us.
Yes.
Especially those of us that do not serve on the Ways and Means Committee.
But you should.
Well, I will say this, we're able to bring home the bacon to the town. So we don't have the exact figures yet, but I think that the the town will hopefully be receiving something for the mural projects, which we know are really excited about.
Yes, I, yeah. Grant, yeah.
We will, I believe so, I don't have the exact.
Last time I looked.
Yeah. No, it's it's in there, I just can't remember exactly how much it is.
Okay, well, I don't want to deny anyone in the audience or online, if they have a question for Delegate Solomon. Okay. Well, I don't want to deny anyone in the audience or online if they have a question for Delegate Solomon. We are needing to close this up, but I do want to give people an opportunity. Seeing any hands. So thank you so much.
Way to bury the lead on a new Carmen's coming in. You were going to bankrupt my family between Don Perez and Carmen.
So you're going to be spending more time.
We, yes, yes. That is our, that is our go to ice cream place in Rockville and now.
Yay. Walk to it. Excellent. So get pizza and then go to Carmen's and then grab a beer. And then you can go anti shopping. Yes.
They would prefer you shop after the beer.
Yeah.
Stores, then get the beer.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, you really could start at.
We will never have to leave Kenzo.
Get some books, then go to Don Perez. Yes. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Okay. So we're running a little late. I kind of would like to do the budget hearing. So if you guys don't mind.
Can we actually just start with ordinance oh one?
Oh, one? Okay, sure.
And then move to the budget hearing.
Okay, then we can, then Sue Ellen could be on a merry way. And then we'll go down to mayor and council and management staff and. So, all right. So, uh, number one, Matt?
Um, council ordinance number oh dash zero one dash twenty twenty four is an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing the acquisition of certain property located at one oh five two eight St. Paul Street in Kensington, Maryland for a public purpose. The public hearing was held on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Um, and the council, uh, will take a vote on adopting orders this evening. The public record flows at four P M. This past Monday on April eighth, we did not receive any public comments. Everything we received was during the public hearing last month. Town attorney Ferguson is here. She has finalized the purchase agreement for the property on St. Paul Street with Ms. Warner's counsel. If you have any questions, Ms. Ferguson.
Yes, we're not taking any further comments from the public.
Well, you know, though, of course, that the original ordinance was for a lesser price.
Right.
Price that we did have. So that, that amendment will have to be made.
And Connor has the amendment.
Right. And then you'll be adopting this purchase agreement, then also in substantially the form.
You have the same motion?
I would go ahead and just adopt the ordinance first as amended and then do the purchase agreement.
Council, do you have any questions for our town attorney or town manager? Not seeing any hands. All right. Motion? Oh, well, no, they can't speak.
And I would move that we adopt ordinance oh dash zero one dash twenty twenty four as amended pertaining to the counter offer proposal from Ms. Warner for a sale amount of one million, ten thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Yes, I would make a, we need a motion on the purchase agreement.
I move that we adopt the purchase agreement between the town of Kensington and ninety three twenty three B and nine three two seven Fraser Evans LLC substantially dropped.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Okay, thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome.
One oh five two eight St. Paul property we've been trying to acquire for many, many years.
Many, many years, I think.
Almost my entire time here.
Yeah, I know Sanford was working on that when he was here.
We, we will look to hire a firm to do architectural design and then we'll include the public on the design phase. Obviously, there's another property that we're looking at as well, but we, we needed to start here.
Yeah, no, I, I think we, we do, and we've spoken about this, is the Pepco property next door.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, thank you.
Um, before this evening is ordinance number oh dash zero two dash twenty twenty four, a public hearing for an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington to appropriate and adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five F Y twenty five budget into levy attacks on certain real and personal property under divisions of six dash two oh three of the tax property article of the annotated code of Maryland amended. We'll give a brief overview of budget. As I mentioned earlier this evening, this is not as clean as we've had the last few years. There were some challenges trying to determine the revenues. Uh, but Susan and I, you know, have kind of gotten through that. Otherwise, you know, some of the changes that we have in here, there are no property tax increases proposed. There's no property tax increases proposed and some of the items that we are looking to overview are located within our operating budget, which was distributed to the public and the council on Monday evening. Just kind of quick overview, our revenues are fairly strong. Most of our revenue increases are coming from income taxes. We are not seeing or anticipating the revenues from income that we did two years ago. Uh, but otherwise they're still strong over a five year period. We are seeing some increases in property values, mostly through redevelopment of existing residential. Uh, as anyone is aware, a lot of the houses, especially on the north side of town, they're being purchased, redeveloped, being sold at a higher market value, which increases the property value, which is a gain to our revenue streams. We've seen some slight increases from the county and the state over previous years that have helped generate revenues to go towards services such as parks and street maintenance and H U R. So those revenues remain strong. With regards to, there is a notation in the operating budget of our current fiscal year. There is a potential that we might need to require a budget amendment for our current fiscal year F Y twenty five. We'll know next month. Uh, we ran into an issue where we may have a negative fund balance. The negative fund balance is directly related to the ARPA funds not being spent as quickly as we had hoped. A couple of the projects that we're using the ARPA funds for have required some additional engineering, uh, which is kind of push the expenses down the road in order to get that off the books. We need to actually move forward with the projects. So we're not sure yet, but we may be requesting a budget amendment in May. I'm hoping to get around that on, you know, hopefully one of the projects moves a little, little quicker than we're anticipating. But otherwise, our revenues are, are pretty solid overall within the town. On the expense side, on the staff side, we are requesting a three point six percent COA for the staff. That would be across the board. Uh, we do have a one point, additional one point four percent increase with a couple positions. Uh, we are also requesting a reclassification and promotion of one of our public works employees to assistant public work supervisor. Uh, we are once again requesting part time administrative help within the office as, you know, where we're very small staff. So if something were to happen, it just gives us a little bit of money to bring in, maybe a temp or something. Um, and then we also are requesting additional funding for a fourth secondary enforcement officer, which we did last year as well. Uh, we're hoping to fill that position this year. On the general government side and, you know, for the most part, the budget's pretty similar. Uh, we are requesting some town hall improvements to the drill hall specifically related to painting and some drapes for the drill hall. So that is a large increase within town hall expenses. Within public works, we did put a line item in to finish and complete the street name signs for the town. Many of you have noticed that we're kind of switching out some of the street name signs. So we have some, an actual line item instead of going through the C I P to complete that hopefully in twenty twenty five. Kind of the main change within the budget, the thing that's really different is that staff is going to request a contract extension with our existing trash brush and recycling contractor on a three year agreement. Uh, we've worked out a verbal agreement for a five year, I'm sorry, five percent increase from our current rates for next year. Uh, and then it would be tied to this consumer pricing index for the following two years. The preliminary numbers that we received from ecology are better than the most recent bid that they were awarded at Garrett Park. So we're actually going to get a better rate than what they had just bid out. Within that contract, there's a proposal to put together a once a week townwide composting program. It would not reduce the second trash collection. Within the town, there is a possibility that we could remove the second trash collection in the second or third year of the extended contract ecology. Uh, the composting collection would be again, once a week. If we determine that it's not going well, we would be able to remove the contract. And the budget also proposes the purchase of a thirteen gallon roll toter for composting for every resident in the town.
Is that, uh, you had to wait a year for the composting? So much time?
Speaking with ecology on Monday, we had proposed starting January first of twenty twenty five. Ecology could begin this as early as July one. Now, we could not do that because we would not have the toters available by then. Uh, but we could start the program sooner than January first, twenty twenty.
Okay.
Again, we're requesting this money in the budget. It doesn't mean that the councils, you know, we are going to bring you at, at another council meeting this, this proposed contract extension. Within the budget, we had to determine whether we could financially do this or not. So that's just really the biggest change in the budget is that it would be adding a service to the community without reducing the second trash collection. Other than that, um, there's not a whole lot of changes. We kind of cleaned up a number of the line items. You'll see from last year and this year, a couple of the numbers went down slightly just because we were able to tighten some of the numbers. But overall, you know, it's pretty similar to last year. And as I mentioned, uh, earlier, we will put forth a few amendments next month within the budget. Just we, we were having some challenges with revenues when we first put this out. We put it out a little earlier than we have all the numbers, so.
Council, any questions?
Just, and it may be this time, I think under the ecology one for compost, because we've been working toward, how might we get to a townwide composting? And this is exciting to see if this is possible. We delve into the details. One, will any drop ins here at town hall still be preserved, enrolled under the ecology? For those who might want to just bring it here.
Sure. So we just signed a one year contract extension with compost crew to maintain the existing facility here.
Yep.
Uh, there is a possibility that, uh, once the M and T bank property is acquired, we could move that over to M and T bank, which would probably be a little more beneficial for the farmer's market. Uh, since, you know, a number of our residents aren't bringing it over here, they'll have collections in front of their house. You know, it makes sense to at least keep that compost crew contract for the near future.
And then the toters thirteen gallons, will they be stamped by the town, like T O K ones?
Yep.
Just be observed.
Yeah. So we have color options and stamp, and stamping would be included with the color option, uh, from the pricing that we got.
I just want to make sure that, so they don't get mixed or confused with what the county is trying to do with the county program.
Yeah.
This people.
It will be on, are we adding a third trash pickup day or a fourth?
So that's not clear yet. The preliminary discussions with ecology, again, this is, you know, we're going to bring this to you next month.
Right.
We just, on the purposes of, you know, money wise, we need to.
No, we need to make sure it's in the budget. Yeah.
It sounded like it would be a Friday compost collection.
Okay.
At least now. I mean, that's something that we could probably work out with them. Ecology does not currently have a residential composting program. They have a commercial composting program with N I H. We reached out to them following getting some preliminary pricing from another vendor to see if they were interested in doing it. They were, uh, so we would be their pilot. At least on the residential side, the composting facility is located in Jessup, Maryland. Um, and if we move forward with this, I will have a lot of information to bring to the council and the public.
And you said that Garrett Park would also be partnering with us?
So the pricing that we have for the composting right now is based on town of Kensington composting collection only. If, uh, our natural trash collection partner is Chevy Chase View. Uh, we were told that if we could get them to agree to a composting collection as well, it would reduce the units by three dollars a month. It would reduce our overall costs drastically. So bring it down from about sixty two thousand into the low forties.
We need to talk this up with Chevy Chase View to, to do this. They've had, you know, change in town management and, um, you know, their elected officials are not quite as active, you know, within our chapter. So, uh, but it might be helpful for us, not, not necessarily Matt, but for our elected officials, like particularly sustainable Kensington group, to reach out to Chevy Chase View to see if they would be wanting to, I mean, we could actually ask to attend the meeting with Chevy Chase View and see if we can't get them interested in wanting to join the composting program. Cause they do, they do have some piece, people that do use compost.
So they have, uh, currently they are subsidizing a contract with compost crew. They have eighteen residents.
Yeah, so.
Residents that they're subsidizing.
Their subsidizing is not very expensive, but.
So, you know, obviously it's a benefit for us financially and it's a benefit for ecology if they were able to get C C V on a composting collection contract as well. They are their trash recycling contractor as well. And their current contract with them would, would be seamless with, if we, if we were to move forward with a three year contract extension. So it kind of put us together.
It's her issue, I reckon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but before we even go in there, I just wanted to say about this issue, it's, it's really exciting. And, and may want to speak of this too, but Sustainable Kensington's been looking at this issue. Owen Logan and Sustainable Kensington's been leading the charge on this. And I know I've met with Matt and done a lot of interviews at different jurisdictions. I think it's important to note that, yes, it's great. We have the budget for this. It's great that ecology is proposing this. It could be a win, win, win for everyone. But we have a really good relationship with compost crew and, you know, we talked, Ed and I talked with, with Matt about making sure they also have an opportunity to provide a, a, a quote. And I know that you provisionally reached out to them. But at least, you know, exploring what is out there, what options. Of course, it's, it sounds like this is a no brainer. But I think we, Connor and I spent a long time cultivating that relationship and we, I think the partnerships worked really well. It just could be that from a business model perspective, it doesn't work. But maybe there's a way, as, as you mentioned, to keep them involved in some way with our, we can offer a service for our, our, our commercial, our businesses, if that's not provided by ecology through compost crew or something to that effect. So I think it'll be important to discuss when you bring the details. Maybe we can also discuss with Sustainable Kensington the next time we meet.
So the numbers we have from compost crew are double what ecology provided us. It's literally double. But I completely agree. Um, you know, I mean, we do have a good relationship with them. You know, I think it's in our best interest to keep the existing facility that we have at town hall, whether we move it or not. And then there's always a commercial aspect to this, uh, which ecology did not seem interested in. So that's a possibility.
Yeah, if we could somehow get all, I mean, now that we have all these restaurants, they're the ones that are creating quite a bit of this. Yeah.
The, the budget is a lot more than composting, but this is a change. This is the biggest change in the budget from, from prior years. And it would be adding a service. And so, you know, that's kind of what they.
I just, I just want to chime in. I second everything that Nate said and thank you, Matt and Susan for making a space in the budget for this possibility next year and, and doing all the legwork. I will add that, uh, part of doing additional legwork will be examining sort of in more granular detail what it means in terms of the composting capabilities that they have and how that might differ from what some residents residents are used to with compost crew. Also look a little bit more closely at that second trash pickup and phase out options and also education and outreach work that would need to be done in the community. Those are the types of facts that with Owen from Sustainable Kensington, we can kind of dig in on a little bit more with town staff to bring that back to a, a future meeting. Is at some point the county's going to push commercial, because small businesses or restaurants particularly to do composting?
I would imagine. Yeah, I mean, Montgomery County was the leader on recycling many, many years ago. So I would imagine that they would push that on composting. Obviously, we have the problems with the restaurants.
Right.
The biggest issue we have with the restaurants in the town is space.
Yeah, no, they don't have the space to.
They don't have the space to let alone get a dumpster.
Right.
And then a compost. So, you know, obviously there's some challenges to that.
And and it's, you know, this stuff is heavy. It's not like you can just, you know, go out there with your big bucket. I mean, we're not, at home, you have a little bucket. At a restaurant, your bucket is going to be pretty darn big.
Again, we we may not be ready for this. I mean, um, the sustainable may come back and say, we're not ready for this, you know, right now. They might say we need a little bit of time. But again, we, what we need to do is figure out in the budget whether this was realistic. Obviously, uh, council member Litter and council member Angle have been talking to town staff about this. We know it's a great interest in the community, um, and we're just trying to find a way to make it work um financially.
Yeah.
Uh, at least as soon as twenty twenty-five.
Okay, good. All right. Council, any other questions regarding the budget before we open it up?
I just want to note that we are, as you mentioned, Tracy, planning to do a community budget forum, May first, where we can go into a little bit more detail with the information here. And um, Matt, I guess my question would be if there are ideas that come up during that discussion that would require tweaking and amendments, just as you've noted, might have to happen with ARPA or otherwise. Um, will that be possible? I know it's tight with the timing of May eighth versus an amendment, maybe after the budget's been enacted.
It, I guess it depends on what what the requests are. I mean, you know, their infrastructure things, you know, that's easier to figure out within the C I P. You know, if someone comes in and asks for a specific line item, you know, then we're going to have to figure out what we're going to remove or find the money from. But, I mean, you know, I mean, I guess it depends on what.
Yeah, well, I can give you, you know, one example from from the um conversations that have happened recently around parking and a recognition that we're probably due to assess um parking options and wayfinding and all of that in town. And if that is something that maybe we need to put more resources into this year, um, that was an example I thought of.
Yeah, so we actually have increased our line item for traffic engineering. Uh, to that respect, we knew we were having some problems specifically, uh, mostly around Baby Cat. Uh, you know, we we were aware of that. Uh, there have been some internal conversations with our traffic engineer about putting putting together a program to clarify a lot of our no parking zones. We're well aware that, you know, some say seven to five, some say seven thirty to five thirty, some say Monday through Friday, some are, you know, inconsistent. We're well aware of that.
Right, we need to be more consistent with those.
So it it's something we have funds for to address in the near future. Um, so I think we can handle that. You know, at at least with respect to signage, basic signage and evaluation of where we need to make improvements with parking signage and directional signs.
Yeah, well, that's good to know. I'm I'm thinking we might need some assessment beyond that, but um don't need to belabor it tonight since I know it's already late. I just wanted to flag that question.
I think there's, there's funds in the budget that we can find for.
Yeah, something like that could actually come out of the C I P.
Yeah.
It's it's infrastructure, so.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Uh, anyone online have a budget question or wants to ask Joe?
Yes, I do. Um, and my apologies for the earlier aud- uh audio problems. Um, I I I really thought the town manager did a nice job with his overview just now and um uh, I do have some questions. One is, and he partly addressed this, uh, saying that the budget statement um refers to a negative general fund balance being put, you know, being a possibility uh for this fiscal year. I'm just wondering if that happens, how how much of a negative general, general fund balance are we looking at?
So it would basically, it would essentially be one of the ARPA payments. So we received two ARPA payments over two consecutive years. Uh, it would essentially be a million. Um, the issue we ran into is uh, the project that we were looking at originally to use the ARPA funds towards uh ran into some issues. Uh, this was related to Kensington Cavendish Park. Uh, we pivoted to a a couple of other locations where we've seen some stormwater management issues. Those projects are more likely. Uh, the problem is that we need to do a little more engineering than we, than, you know, other than just going out and putting storm drains. And we actually need engineering designs to make sure that what we're putting in doesn't uh mess up that area or further down the stream uh that's taking a little more time. In order for those ARPA funds to come off the books, we have to have a contract associated with them. Although we have engineering contracts for that, we don't have construction contracts for those. So there's a possibility that we may need to do a budget amendment. We're trying to figure that out with the town attorney and the town auditors. Uh, so if we do need to do a budget amendment, we'll have it before you in May. Uh, otherwise, if one of these projects moves just a little quicker than it is, uh, then we will not have an issue, so.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, reading the budget statement closely and maybe between the lines a little bit, it appears that the Friday trash pickup might be destined for elimination. Uh, will residents have the option to continue that twice-a-week pickup, the Friday pickup, even if the um, the ecology uh composting project goes forward? And if so, if if it's going to be eliminated, what's the rubric for determining whether to eliminate it or not?
So within the budget, all we're trying to do is figure out what we can afford to do for F Y twenty-five. Uh, F Y twenty-five, if we move forward with a weekly composting uh program, would not eliminate a second trash collection. The agreement that we would have with ecology would allow us to evaluate the second trash collection on a year-by-year basis. That would obviously come back to the mayor and council and would involve public comment. Um, so I, you know, I I don't think the answer can be tonight. You know, but it would leave that open down the road. Though obviously, we are not looking to eliminate a second trash collection in the upcoming fiscal year.
Right, but the budget statement, I believe, has references to a second and third year uh under the proposed agreement with ecology.
Which would be evaluated in 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 the future year. So we cannot answer that right now, Joe, other than it would be evaluated and the mayor and council would take public comment to determine whether it's it's feasible uh or applicable by the residents of the community, so.
So is there a rubric for for determining whether to go ahead or not? Or are you just saying it's it's premature to even discuss it?
It's too premature. The contract that we would put in front of the council for the extension would just allow us to remove the second trash collection. There's nothing set in stone.
Okay. I noticed that the budget statement refers to a five percent uh increase in per-unit collection for ecology services in fiscal twenty-five. Um, as you're aware, uh, the, there have been periodic and indeed recurring problems with ecology trucks leaking oily substances on town streets. And the most recent episode was uh a week ago yesterday. So, um, if you would, help me understand why we're proposing to pay ecology more when its vehicles are leaving oily residues polluting the streets of the town, especially in parts of the town where there are no sidewalks and residents and pedestrians are forced to walk in the streets if they're going to go out for a walk.
So the costs of the collections obviously have gone up. They've gone up greater than what our internal on in um internal escalator was within the existing contract. So we're coming off a six-year contract. So those rates were negotiated nearly seven years ago. The five percent is very reasonable. Uh, it's actually less than what the current public bids are, including what Garrett Park just got. With respect to the maintenance of the vehicles, uh, you know, they're large vehicles, they're wear and tear is great. Uh, when there's issues, we address them as quickly as we can with ecology. Uh, again, they're trash trucks. Uh, they're going to have issues. So, I mean, I'm very happy with ecology. Uh, like I said, they've been with us for six years. Next month, I'm going to be asking the mayor and council to extend the three-year contract with them. They got us through COVID, which was incredibly difficult situation for them. They lost most of their C D L drivers. Uh, they are the third collector we've had in this town. Uh, they are by far the best. Uh, they are way better than what we were at collecting trash. Uh, I will defend ecology. Um, they're not perfect, but uh they're a very good hauling company and I'm very happy with them.
Well, I'm sure that best practices would would be not to pollute town streets with oily residues from the trucks. And this is not a a weekly problem. It's 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 periodic. It does recur, but it's a periodic problem. So they must have some maintenance issues uh at their end. And I'm not going to go into great detail with this, but it just seems to me that this is, this is uh at odds with a five percent uh uh increase uh for their, for their services.
Okay.
The um um page nine of the budget's um statement includes a salary schedule for fiscal twenty-five. Could you help me understand this chart? Because it lists minimums and maximums. And, you know, wh- what are these and how are they set or determined? For example, the town manager's position, if I'm reading this right, could pay anywhere from a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars or could pay upwards of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. I I just don't understand which it is or or what the uh um, how this, how this really works. And this is on page nine of the budget statement.
So we've um, we've explained this every single year. Um, the council is required to adopt a salary schedule within the budget. A salary schedule sets what a salary can be within a certain realm. So for example, the town manager, you know, if if you're at the lower end, you're going to be paid at least a hundred and thirty-one thousand. If you're at the higher end, you're at a hundred and eighty-five. That is what the salary schedule establishes with the parameters. Each employee is within that salary schedule. Uh, we have an older staff. Uh, most of our staff have been here for many years. Uh, as I've told you in previously years, if you take the midpoint of the salary range, you're going to find where most employees are located. Uh, the salaries are available. We have provided them to you. Uh, we have never not provided them to you. Uh, and the salary schedule is what this council is required to approve within the budget. And that's why it's provided.
So, um, I think it would be far more transparent and 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 frankly democratic if you were able to just say in the budget statement, how much each of these positions were paid, rather than leave people to guess that uh it might be, it might fall within a certain range here. In fact, that little bit of information is not included at all in the budget statement, that it's that's within this range. And you sort of have to kind of maybe do an average or guess as to where the uh, where the uh salaries are. Why not just be transparent about it and say, this is what the town manager is going to be paid. This is what the clerk treasurer will be paid and and me, and leave it at that?
I'm open to suggestions from the mayor and council.
I mean, I will just say I prefer the salary schedule for the reason that this helps us understand if we need to replace an employee at any particular labor category, what the possible salary may be, if we fix it to a singular number of what an employee is making now. That may not be the replacement value of that employee. Sorry, Susan, I'm not talking about you like chairs and tables, but like, if we, you know, if we were to get a new treasurer, that salary range helps build our budget. It could be that the next treasurer comes in at a different salary, depending on market economics, quality of applicants, et cetera. This, to me, is from a legislative standpoint, this helps me more than than the numbers. And then, Joe, I see your point about democratic, but uh, if I heard every time it's been asked by any resident, what are the current two-day salaries they've been provided? So to me, that is both democratic and transparent. The numbers are there on today's employees, but this helps us build budgets for the next year for the unforeseen.
So why not have it both ways? Why not have the salary schedule and the specific salaries listed in the budget? I mean, that would, that would enhance transparency and would would enhance, uh, you know, the the uh, the democratic nature of of a town budget, a small town budget.
I I see your point. Uh, you know, it's odd. I've been on the council for seven years. I've never once asked for the current salaries of any employee on the council. I don't need it to build a budget. I need to know what the rate for that equivalent position is in the region, in the event that we want to add another position. If we need to replace somebody who wins the lottery, Susan, you're going to win the lottery. Congratulations. Um, and and so for me, this, this actually provides me all the information sitting up here that I need. I, everybody's different. I've never once felt the need to ask for the salaries of current employees.
Well, it's not a zero-sum game either. I mean, it's, this is something we could have both ways. We could have that salary schedule, which is more confusing in my view than than it is clarifying. And we could also be really enhance the transparency of small-town governance in Kensington by having a specific salary. This is in fiscal twenty-five, this is what we're going to pay the town managers. This is what we're going to pay them.
And it is available if you ask for it.
I know.
I I know, Joe, we go through this every year. We've seen your point. We've responded, but, and I'd like to move on. It's nine-thirty.
I know.
Want to have public appearances? It's going to be after ten o'clock at this point. So is there anything else you would like to address?
Couple more questions. And I also uh sat through the first forty-five minutes of this meeting when the discussion was devoted to what the town sign should look like. So I I would appreciate a little bit of indulgence, even at this late hour, for to me, for me to complete these questions. And I am, my point, I seem to to not be able to convey it very well. That this is not a zero-sum game on the budget salaries. We can have both the salaries and the budget schedule uh every year. And it's 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 not, it's not something we have to go through every year, but apparently we're going to have to. Um, I have a, another question about the uh construction and repair of uh bridges on the Kensington Parkway, Kensington Frederick Avenue. Uh, last year, the budget uh estimated this was going to cost three hundred thousand dollars. This year, it's up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, uh, if you would, help me understand why this has gone up so much? Nearly seventeen percent within a year for these bridges that have been, we've known they needed repairs for quite some time now.
So, uh, you know, we increased the proposed R F P amount uh based on uh construction costs that we're seeing. Uh, you know, doesn't mean it's going to cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but what we want to do is be safe. Make sure that we had enough money in that line item with the C I P to cover any additional costs for the construction when the R F P goes out later this year. So it could be less, it could be more. We just need to budget and have a better understanding of what we think construction costs are going to come in uh once the R F P is issued.
The budget statement refers to um inflationary pressures as a reason for this increased line item. But I don't think that inflation, even in this era, has gone up seventeen percent a year, has it?
Uh, yeah, it has.
And do we know when this is going to get underway? I mean, Brutus has been very, very slow at taking on this project, a project that has been identified as 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 needed for quite some time.
Uh, as we explained uh at the last meeting, the project manager for Brutus uh resigned and took another position. We had to replace that project manager. They're moving along. There was also a request from Montgomery Parks to amend the engineering design to allow for the change of the main access point in the Kensington Cavendish Park, uh, which needs to be addressed. Uh, the R F P should go out later this year, and I hope that construction will begin before the end of the calendar year.
All right. And uh, finally then, uh, I I do hope that this bridge, bridge project gets underway because it's 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 been on hold for quite some time. And and the the project manager's departure doesn't seem to be adequate reason for for this to be delayed. But in any case, um, I noticed that there's a um line item in the proposed budget for twelve thousand dollars for street sweeping. I think it's the same amount as last year. Um, how often do town streets receive uh street sweeping attention? And are, and are residents notified so that they can move their cars to accommodate the street sweeper?
No, we do one street sweep in a year. It's in the spring. It's over a two-day period. Um, what they do is they, you know, it's just a, a, they usually do it on a Monday and Tuesday. They go around the vehicles. Throughout the year, the town can also do street sweeping. We have an attachment with our skid steer. Uh, it actually is better when we do it internally. The problem is it takes us a long time because the attachment we have with the skid steer uh cannot do the volume that the uh, that the street sweeping contractor does. So the answer is once a year, typically in the spring. Uh, so you'll probably see it come sometime in May.
And uh, is this work done by the town crew or is this an outside contractor?
So the con, the main one is done by a contractor. They're called Quiet Sweep. Uh, they have a contract with Montgomery County, uh, along with uh Maryland Park Transportation. You'll probably see them through town. They do the Kensington Carrying Station. You'll see them on Connecticut Avenue. And then, like I said, the town can do street sweeping periodically with our attachment. It's very difficult. Uh, you know, they can only do so much at one time compared to a uh, a commercial contractor.
And 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 residents aren't notified that this is going to be taking place because that would be useful, I think, information to have.
Not when you do it over two days. You typically, it's, it, you'll hit where you need to hit.
All right, that exhausts my short list of questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Al? Al. Naaman Street.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
For the record, I'm Al Carr and I live on Washington Street.
Thank you.
I'm just going to hand something out here. So kudos to town manager Matt Hoffman and the staff on putting together the budget. I did have a couple of comments. One is on the revenue side is that, you know, I would propose that the town should go with the constant yield rate. And even though the General Assembly did repeal the advertising requirement in the eyes of the law, the way to not raise taxes is to go with the constant yield rate because that is the rate that will raise the same amount of money, not including new construction. So that would yield a little bit less revenue. And I have a couple of suggestions for revenue sources for the town. One, on the longer term option is the town might want to consider having a hotel tax, which when the flats at Knoll Station eventually opened, if those hotel units are going to be treated for tax purposes that way.
Can I, I don't want to interrupt. That is no longer on the table. They are being removed.
Oh, okay.
Hotel units are being removed. And I don't want to interrupt you, but the biggest concern I have is this gross accessible property base is with the Figs in of thirty seven, thirty seven hundred pliers mill. So this is what I was kind of talking about earlier in the evening. There is a comfort level from us not to reduce this, at least this year, because we don't know what the appeal process is going to come through. So I would not be comfortable going to the constant yield rate this year. But I, I, I hear you clearly. Once that's resolved and it comes back next year at a lower rate, I think we would be a lot more comfortable on the staff side to come to the council with that proposal. You know, we, we just want to know what's going to happen with the appeal on thirty seven hundred. Then it's a, as you know, substantial amount of money on the Figs. And it, it caught us off guard. It concerned us. Obviously, we are proposing some service improvements to the town this year. And, you know, so we need to have a little more confidence on the accessible base and our revenues before we were to request the council to go to the constant yield or to a low tax rate. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I think, thank you for that explanation. That's really helpful. Does Mr. Brawl have to go back to the planning board now that he's going to alter the makeup of the units?
We have had with him. I know he has been in touch with Councilmember Crimmins about holding a DRB meeting.
We have site amendments.
So we have to go back to the planning board.
Yeah, we, we have told Mr. Brawl two years ago to go and get a local map amendment. We are looking at it internally on a refresh of the twenty, in the same sector plan. That's not going to need his time. Obviously, Tom was looking for something in the next six to twelve months. We're looking three, five, seven years down the road. He's aware of this, but he has told us, he's been very clear that the hotels will be removed from his, from his project.
Okay, that's really interesting. So I, I still think it makes sense for the town to have a hotel tax, you know, for the, to the extent that there might be, you know, Airbnb's or short term rentals or some future application just might be good to have that just already on the books. Another revenue source is potentially, there is a, a business called Dark Fiber and Infrastructure. They are, the state considers them a public utility, similar to Pepco or Washington Gas. They're the company that, you know, dug up our streets, laid fiber up to cable a few years ago. And.
Was that, was that the one for the county?
They are a for profit business.
Okay.
And the county does partner with them.
They bet in, okay.
But they are not, they're supposed to pay property taxes and they're not. So I think they've even like forfeited their like Maryland incorporation. But in any case, something should be done to, you know, recover the, the money that they owe in property taxes that they have not been paying for, for years. So that's something to look into.
I think they, didn't they give us some money?
We kept their, we kept their bond.
Their bond?
We, we declined to return their bond. They did not repair some issues they caused.
Right. Okay.
I feel like this for the county, I mean, the county should be looking at this too because it's a lot of money for the county. But anyway, so that's on the revenue side. On the spending side, I would suggest that the town should invest this year in acquiring the, the Pepco street lighting infrastructure. We know that it is, you know, dilapidated. Pepco is not doing a good job at speedy repairs. Their records are incorrect in terms of the invoices that they send. And they have a map where you can, you know, report a light that's out. The, the map has a lot of errors in it. In any case, the history on this, if you look at the, the town has a different rate for utilities for property taxes than it does for other types of property. And Sanford had put that in play. He had kind of nudged that up every year to where it is now. It's kind of high, five cents, you know, five dollars per hundred dollars. And that was for the purpose of to, you know, to raise some capital funds to eventually acquire the streetlights from Pepco so that they could be upgraded, you know, to LED, more energy efficient, cost savings for the energy and for the, the maintenance. And I know priorities change, elections happen, you know, money gets moved around. At one point in that pot of money was, you know, almost three hundred thousand. And I know the town has done a lot on the advocacy part. I know the town spent a lot to advocate at the Public Service Commission to defeat a, a, a not very flexible LED proposal from, from Pepco. But I was just chatting with Sue Ellen out in the hallway, and there have been some breakthroughs at the Public Service Commission, thanks to Sue Ellen's efforts, that will dramatically, I think, lower the cost of an acquisition like that. There is state and federal money available to subsidize acquisition and conversion. That's available now and it might not be available in the future. So, and there's, you know, there's loans, there's like the local government investment or infrastructure finance loan you can get from the state and you pay that back with, you know, the energy and the maintenance savings. There's like, you know, the Jane Lawton loan also from the state. So there's, there's ways to make it happen. And so that is my input for the spending side. Thank you.
Great. And I just, not to, not to belabor this, but the constant yield interpretation that you've given us. Isn't that intention with your advocacy for, against the HB fourteen eighty eight? Because you indicated to the town that we were, we'd get a windfall, one hundred and twenty thousand dollar windfall. The only way we get that windfall is if we keep the rate the same. If your proposal is that we reduce the rate so that we have a constant yield, then we got no windfall. So which one do you want?
So we don't know what the outcome is going to be. Luckily, the bill was defeated luckily. So that's, that's a positive financially for the town. If you read the fiscal note for the bill prepared by the Department of Legislative Services, they say, you know, had that bill passed, it would have cost the town one hundred and twenty thousand dollars this year. You know, and that is knowing, of course.
That's wrong though, right? Because if it's.
I mean, if you argue that the DLS was wrong, you can make that argument.
No, but you're, no, I'm asking.
We don't know what the ultimate outcome is going to be. We know that the, the, the property owner is now at the second level appeal, PTAB.
Okay. Well, you're not, you're not.
That hearing is on.
A lot of uncertainty. Your advocacy to the state and to the town, to your fellow residents was, we, we have this one hundred and twenty thousand dollar windfall. And now you're telling us, no, give it up.
No, so I, I'm suggesting going with the constant yield rate. That would be about a thirty thousand dollar difference, not a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference.
But if you add the hundred and twenty two thousand dollars to it, I think that's what Dan's point is. If you take that additional money that, that is purported to come in from this assessment on thirty seven hundred pliers mill, that and, and we kept constant yield, we would not see that additional tax revenue.
You would not see as much of it, but you would still see it.
But I, how? I mean, if we reduce the rate to offset the increased assessable base, then we bring in less revenue and we share the reduced rate with everybody in town. And it's being paid for by the one property with the increased assessment. If we don't do the constant yield, if we keep the rate the same, then there's a potential of increased revenue for the town. I'm just hearing you are doing both positions. And I'm saying, I think, I don't think you can reconcile them.
Yeah, no, the constant yield versus not constant yield is about a thirty thousand dollar difference. The thirty seven hundred pliers mill is a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference. So they're.
That was over two years.
They're, they're over two fiscal years that hit this year. The previous fiscal year and this fiscal year are in calendar year twenty twenty four.
I, 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 I don't think, I don't think your numbers are right. I think you're.
Oh, well, you know, I'm happy to.
Figure was not changing the rate. I think this is a proposal to change the rate. And so I, I, I guess I'm asking, which do you want? Change the rate or don't change?
Yeah, I guess I don't see it that way. So, yeah, I, I, I think the constant yield is the way to go. And I think there's some other ways to make up the thirty thousand dollars in lost revenue that might result from going with the constant yield.
I think we won't know until the, the appeal is completed.
No, there's, there's a whole lot of.
There's a lot of uncertainties in the one.
But I didn't sense that uncertainty in your advocacy. And now that's all I hear is uncertainty.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Al. Okay. And you look so lonely online there.
I'm still here. It's gotten dark.
Hey, and it's only what, nine thirty there? What are you, an hour or two hours?
Only an hour, so it's eight forty.
It's only, it's only eight thirty, eight forty three there.
Yeah, it was like ten forty five though.
All right. We don't see any additional hands. And so we need a motion to hold the hearing open until May sixth at four P M.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I move to leave the hearing, the public hearing open ordinance oh dash zero three dash twenty twenty four until May sixth at four P M.
Is there a second? Second. All is in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and do public appearances and then we'll do our mayor and council reports. Anyone here wish to speak on anything that's not already on the agenda? Joe?
Yes. Couple of questions. One, what could you tell us about the new street signs, the implementation thereof? I mean, is there a schedule that's being followed or is it just kind of whenever the sign comes in? I've noticed that there have been some new signs replacing the older antique looking signs. So I just wonder what, what, if any schedule there is that the town's following.
A little bit. So we're trying to finish the south side of town, which is basically east of Connecticut, south of the railroad tracks. We're going to try to finish that by the end of the summer. We did do a number of signs on the north side, just, just preliminary, where we did some improvements, road improvements specifically at Faragut and University in addition to Pliers Mill Road in St. Paul. We'll probably get to those later in the year. And then the west side will probably be early twenty twenty five. So within, within the fiscal year, we should be completing.
And are these signs being replaced for aesthetic reasons? Or is it because the older signs were kind of losing their, I don't know, appeal somehow?
There's a couple of reasons. One, we decided, well, we had a couple of signs that went down. They're very expensive, the cast iron signs, and they did not meet, necessarily meet current requirements with regards to reflectivity and sizing. So what we did is we put together a demo of a very old sign. The original one is still located on Montgomery Avenue by Noah's Children's Library. We put it up as a demo, received some pretty positive feedback and decided to move forward with replacing them. They're pretty much up the code. They're visible, they're reflective, and they are about a fifth of the cost of the cast irons, so.
Which leads to another question. Where do we stand with the benches lottery, if that's the way to put it?
Well, if we get to my report, I'll bring that up.
Well, I'll just wait around for that then, but maybe you just.
Yeah, there's the reason to hang in there.
Yeah, I guess. I was, two other points and then I'll yield the floor. What was determined about the ecology truck leaking oily substances on town streets last week on Tuesday? I think it was the recycling truck. Do we know why or what happened exactly? Other than they're, they're, they're trucks and they're, they're old and.
I'm sorry, I was out of the office last Tuesday, so I'm not sure what the, what the outcome was, Joe. So I, I didn't get that report and I was out of the office, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't have any answers for you.
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to, well, I'd like to pursue that because, you know, again, it's not the first time it's ever happened. And they really shouldn't be doing that stuff, putting in the streets like that. Finally, tip of the hat to the mayor for alerting Montgomery County Police Sunday, last Sunday, about a stolen car that was parked on, at the intersection of Frederick Avenue and Frederick Place. And I was unable, seeing this car, to alert Montgomery County Police non emergency line. I kept getting recordings saying the call would not be able to go through at that time. So on Sunday morning, and I called the mayor and she swung into action. And so by that evening, there were, there were Montgomery County Police and a police tow to remove that car. And it was, I think by ten thirty P M, they, they had wrapped everything up. It took a while because the car not only was stolen, but had four flat tires on it. And moving it around obviously was pretty difficult. So as they say, a tip of the hat to the mayor.
Well, thank you. It was one of those key is that you can start by just doing the wire thing. So, but I'll, I'll give you a tip, Joe. I actually just reported it online. And I guess maybe being the mayor helped get a little bit more action. But that's all I did is I reported it online.
I, I thought, not to, not to ask you to disclose sources, but I thought you indicated you had somebody whom you could contact.
Yeah, I, I did my Googling and decided not to bother them and try the online version. And it obviously worked quite well.
Okay. Internet, huh? Okay.
They have a abandoned car report that you can go to.
Isn't, isn't that just, just theoretically, isn't that a little concerning though? That on weekends, the non emergency police line is not being answered? I know there's fiscal issues and you and I talked a little bit about that, but still it's of, of no small concern, I would think. That's, that's the case nowadays. It used not.
Given the choice, I'd rather them answer the nine one one call versus the non emergency calls. But it, it is a problem within our region that police, people do not want to be police officers. They don't want to be nine one one operators. And it's something for smarter people than me to figure out how to attract people to these jobs.
Uh huh. This did not raise to the level of a nine one one call.
No, it didn't. I mean, I'm just saying, I, if given the choice, I would rather people who are on duty answering those calls.
Yeah, of course. I don't think there's any doubt about that.
Yeah.
It is concerning that the non emergency line that they publish and have made available isn't being answered.
This is true, but they do offer the, the online version. And it obviously, in this particular case, worked very well. Otherwise, if you talk to somebody, my guess would be they would tell you it'll be moved in forty eight hours. So that's usually what they tell people.
Well, here's hoping we don't have this kind of miss, uh, problem.
Hopefully not. Correct. Okay, anything else? I think we lost your voice again, Joe.
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's move down to council updates. Uh Darren, you want to go first?
I I don't have anything to add to the discussion other than I thought the town party on Saturday night went very well.
I think it did, I think it did great. Yeah.
Great to see neighbors that you don't see all
Mm-hmm.
all the time.
It's nice seeing uh some younger families there, uh some younger people.
Every year the.
They get.
Things younger.
We get older, they get younger. Well, since you brought it up, I do want to thank our hundred and thirtieth committee, which included um Nicole Andrews, Don uh Freterelli and uh Megan Griggs and uh Darren and myself and then Jody Krieger. So uh it, we worked really hard on it and I think we um um we did learn that people are a lot more busy than they are five years ago. I think that we have a lot to offer here in Kensington and so everybody's going in a hundred different directions, but we had a good turnout and um everybody had a good time, so.
Just thirteen quick things.
Yeah.
Just one, just one. Um we mentioned last meeting that the Compass Arts Center was coming to town. They are here.
Yes.
They have held their first classes already. In fact, town residents in Jimbo Dead taught Intro to Oil Painting last night or Monday night.
Did you sign up? Were you?
Not, but I heard all about it at um at the solar eclipse. Um but the official grand opening is this Saturday, the thirteenth, from twelve to six at the building ten three thirty-five uh Connecticut Parkway, right next to the post office. So they will have an open house. You'll be able to meet uh Glenn, who is the director. I'm sure there will be several artists and teachers who'll walk through the building, refreshments, um so be exciting that they are, I mean it went very slow and now all of a sudden it went very fast that they are, so great addition.
Yeah, that is good. All right, anything else? Okay, hey?
I'll try to be quick. Um so Anne and I, so Hunter and I published an article in the Town Journal on U L I cap process for some of that new extension. Uh in parallel, we've been doing some outreach. Anne and I have been working with uh some of the residents of Ken Gar and and some of their, uh I think, I don't know if we call it their neighborhood association, but uh just to talk through some of the challenges and opportunities that this presents to their neighborhood that were expressed during that process and then also um subsequently in conversations with them. They're just trying to figure out how we can best incorporate their um their legitimate concerns, but then also what they see as opportunities to make um improvements in terms of, I guess, uh you know, property values, exploring mechanisms like community land trust, making sure certain businesses are not um pushed out and so on. So we're we're working with them to actually get the word out and go door to door and hear their their concerns, how that process will play out over the next couple of weeks and months. Uh culminating, hopefully not in one final discussion, but a community forum quickly take place in Ken Bar sometime in mid-June. We haven't officially set the date with them because we also need to look into the availability of the community center there, but it's probably going to be the weekend of the twenty-second, twenty-third.
Okay.
Um but we'll continue to to work with them because it's been really positive conversations about um about those issues, so. And you might want to elaborate. The only other two things I want to flag are the meetings for the pedestrian bicycling um access and safety working group is going to be on, the next meeting is April sixteenth at seven thirty here at Town Hall. And then Sustainable Kensington has a meeting uh maybe fifteenth uh also here at Town Hall. Anne, I'll let you describe the Day of the Book Festival table if you would like. If not, happy to do it.
Yeah, sure. I'll mention that. Um uh April twenty-first is the Day of the Book celebration and we will have a town tent where we have two tables, one table where we're going to combine Sustainable Kensington Greenscape and Pedestrian Bike uh and Access Safety Working Group and then another table for the Juneteenth team. Um so we're bringing out volunteers from those committees to meet with community members, encourage you all um to, of course, attend Day of the Book and stop by. Um and then just to add to what Nate was describing with the Ken Gar meetings, we've had two so far with a number of residents that are, I think technically it's the Civic Association, but either way, they've been uh productive conversations and and I think everybody recognizes that uh true consultation takes a a lot of time and many steps, so um we're building on what's already been done.
Just, I have a quick question. Um since that uh the plantings that um that people are going to be able to buy didn't work out this year that Catherine Wood was working on. Uh that was going to be considered our Arbor Day. Is that correct? Are we doing something else?
Well, we'll be able to count our May eighteenth um Tree Care one oh one workshop.
Okay.
As an Arbor Day event, I was gonna um mention, we're going to get a registration page up just like we did last year. Um but that will be available to town residents um to come learn about tree care. Uh so I think we'll be able to use that and then create the proclamation.
Okay. Perfect. Anything else?
Nothing at this point.
Okay, all right. Um I just have a couple of things. I want to bring some uh dates to everybody. We've already talked about the events. Uh of course, the car show is May fourth. Um May sixteenth, the Kensington Ken Group is having their party around the fountain for the businesses, so if you're available. Uh it's open to the public as well because it's a public park, but um they are having that event. It's also right now, according to the M C chapter, it's also a chapter meeting, although location, time uh is still to be determined, so that may change, but that's also on the sixteenth. And then has anybody decided, uh they already know they're not going to the M N L uh conference? You're not?
I'm not.
You're not?
Sure.
Okay, Anne, are you or Darren going? Okay, Anne, do you know?
I don't think I'm going to be able to. I think we have a family schedule conflict, but um.
That's fine. Susan's always trying to get, find out if people are coming so she can get you registered, so it sounds like Darren's a maybe and everybody's a not. It's okay, I'll be there. I'll hold on, I'll represent us. Yeah, I'll hold on the fort. Okay, and let's see, oh, uh two more things. I'm gonna make Joe hang hang in here till the very, very bitter end. Um I talked to uh one of our residents on Kensington Parkway. She was actually on the call, but I'm I'm sure it went longer than she expected. Um as uh Matt brought up, we need to look at the signage, so it'd be more consistent in our permitting signs. Um there is some concern with some of the residents regarding baby cat that uh especially on events when they have the big events, you know, are their maps correct? I think we can do a better job getting um signage particularly at the uh Farmer Smart or the train lot on that these, this property is available to park in at certain hours. Um and then I don't know whether M and T would be okay with putting up a sign uh into, you know, at that lot to allowing people to park there, you know, after certain hours.
Only time, just.
To see if they would be okay with that.
You know, every six week.
Right, we need to check in with them anyway. Um I do understand that sometimes the post office is not very thrilled with people parking there, so um uh but I think those. I don't know, it's, they're funny. They're funny. So anyway, so it's um, well, you know, they consider themselves a federal agency, so anyway. Um but if we can, uh I know uh you're working on the um the permit signage.
Yeah, I mean, we we're well aware that the the signs don't add up and
Okay.
something will try to clean up and I think at least on the residents on Kensington Parkway with parking in front of the aprons will resolve.
Okay.
Uh but we do need to figure out a way, better way, fine sign uh mechanism.
Definitely. Uh I mean, we have parking available. I mean, it's even parking is available at Town Hall. And people just don't realize it's a, you know, it's a five-minute walk. It's not a bad walk. So uh we need to pick up the game here. Can I give a council member uh that particular task to make? Crack the whip?
Um baby hip or on the sign?
Well, both. Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Uh and the last item is the uh update on the benches. So we are, we have ten benches. Right now, we have twenty-seven people who have contacted Alex uh regarding one of the benches. Um people have until May first to register with her. And then we will be uh pulling the names out of um, out of whatever we have. Um um the week of May sixth, but she'll have everybody's email who has signed up for a bench. They will be notified of the date. They will be notified of the time, which will be most likely between noon and three thirty. And it'll be in the drill hall and you can come and watch the names being pulled. It will be done in public. So um so we'll uh but she she will contact everyone after May first, letting them know when uh when the drawing will be.
You need not be present to win.
And you need not be present to win, but it will be open to the public for those who want to come and observe and then get a big yahoo if they are a winner. Um the benches are fifty dollars. The the what money is raised will go to the Hunger Ministry over at St. Paul's, which serves two oh eight nine five. I was telling Matt today, I was looking at the addresses. And we have about uh thirty people within the town that receives food and gift cards every month. And um most are at Kensington House, Silver Creek Apartment, and then some uh residential homes. Um the largest group is in Rebecca House, which is just outside our border by um on Connecticut Avenue. They res- there's about fifty people in there that they service. So on behalf, thank you, thank you. I think it's a really great, great way of doing it, so. The winners, they will be delivered to your front yard. Um you might be able to attempt the public works to maybe get it a little further, but not without offering uh maybe. Yeah, no money, but uh maybe a cool drink or something like that. But uh yes, they will be delivered to the front yard and uh they are pretty heavy, so but two people can carry them nicely. All right, so I hope that answered everybody's questions. And now we just, yeah, I'm sorry the meeting went so long, but I think it was very interesting and I know the signage was very important to our business community. So I'm glad we did spend some time on that. Okay, uh I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We want to stay? When are we meeting next time? Anybody wanna? Which day, May? Well, May eighth. We and uh are we doing this in person or online? You're out of town. Is that correct? You're out of the country. Yeah. So um okay. So um since this meeting ran so long, let's plan to do it online. And so staff can not have to be out so late. Yeah, so we will do it strictly by Zoom in May. And uh we will meet on May eighth. Uh Nate will be absent. Let me write that down, so I don't forget. And can I entertain a motion, someone entertain a motion to adjourn? So Matt can go home.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, second.
All is in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi, thank you. Good night, Anne.
Thank you.